The next fifty-five minutes on economic development goals and objectives.
Yeah, so good evening, council. Thank you so much for coming early tonight so we can have this important discussion. One of our community goals is economic development and focusing on the on those goals. And so we do have a slide slideshow, so this is in your council packet. And what we hope to talk about tonight is our existing economic development strategies, some core principles and local economic development programming, key objectives, and then discuss our goals for twenty-five and twenty-six, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. Are you not seeing something in the? Oh. A pair. The good news is that with you guys working on the strategic plan, you've already done some of the work that will help us to reach these goals. Our planning department has already been working on some of this with working on our Monument twenty forty comprehensive plan. And also with our finance office and our leadership team have also been working on this with our budget and our long-term planning. So we don't need to reinvent the wheel. And we can work, build off what we've already started to work on. So just a reminder of the strategic priorities. All of these do play into economic development, so ensuring a long-term financial health and sustainability economic development will help us do that. With long-term forecasting and sustainability, making sure our services are resilient and that we're investing in our community. Strengthening community engagement, hearing what what the community wants. Building partnerships and relationships will help us with that and also working with our regional partners as well. Working to establish, enable responsible community development, making sure that our processes and procedures so that people know what to expect when they come in and want to develop in our in our community. And reinforcing a positive work culture will ensure that we don't have the turnover and that staff is also a big part of economic development in our community as well. And so we've already talked about this, but we're already doing some of the some of these projects that we need to be doing in order to stay out establish good economic development principles. Twenty forty, we will have been and we will continue to be engaging with the community to understand what we want and how we get there. And then again, in our budget planning, we're working towards financial resiliency. So we've just asked people to join the citizens service level committee. We'll kick that meeting off in early August and bring their recommendations to you when we present the draft budget to you in September. And our planning department and our finance team will be integral in this process. So Dan and Jennifer helped me work on this. And so if they have things that they want to elaborate on, they'll chime in, you know, with any thoughts that they have. But when we're looking at local economic development programming, we have some core principles. So we want to make sure that we're collaborating. We had a good example of collaboration earlier this afternoon. But building bridges, making sure that we're working with different sectors, different industries, different community partners. We want to make sure that our community is at the table when we have these conversations. We want to make sure that we're thinking about how every aspect of our community will be impacted by economic development and any developments that come in. We want to make sure that they are sustainable, that they can last into the future and help our community last into the future. We want to focus on what we already have, so our existing industries that are here in Monument. And those are, it's easier to keep people than it is to find new people. So that goes for both staff as well as businesses here. And then making sure that that we're looking at long-term investments, so people that can really grow here and stay here and even expand here. We want to make sure that we're focusing on long-term revenues as well and not just quick, quick wins, quick, easy revenue wins. We want to make sure that we're capitalizing on human investment, so making sure that we're building the future labor force, that we partner with people like the Pikes Peak Workforce Center and the school district and our local colleges that can really help be a pipeline for those future businesses or or our existing businesses that might be missing some skill sets and what we can do to build those skill sets for the future. Ensuring that we're, we're working with environmental and corporate responsible companies to ensure that environmental and public safety and health for our community. We want to partner with our developers and companies to make sure that we're building livable communities, that they're walkable, that there's places where people can have fun things to do, have all the resources that they need in our communities. And then collaborate regionally, so making sure that we're working with the state, the county, the city of Colorado Springs and the Colorado Springs Chamber and EDC, the Pikes Peak Area Council of Government and their efforts on economic development in the region as well. As well as our local partners here, the the Chamber of Commerce, our existing metro districts, the school district, utility providers, those are all really important partners as well. And some, some key objectives are enhancing competitiveness. Competition can be healthy. It can make other businesses kind of rise to the occasion if they hear another business is coming in. They can change what they might be offering. So competition is important and we want to make sure that we're, we're looking at that when we are examining economic development. We want to make sure that we're looking at growth from a sustainable and inclusive standpoint so that it benefits not just one segment of the community, that we're making sure that we're including all segments of our community and looking at long-term impacts to the environment as well as our, our community. And then expand, creating jobs and keeping them here. It's really important that when we do attract a primary employer, we want to make sure that they stay here and they can grow here and that people can continue to grow here, that our students have a potential job they can go into, that they can learn about different industry. And then making sure that we create an environment that's going to keep that company here. And then extending, expanding our tax base and revenue, so making sure we have a diverse form of revenue that's coming in. And we are able to use those revenues then to provide the services that we need to our community. Some more key objectives are to make sure that we're supporting our local businesses and encouraging entrepreneurship. So this is another way that by partnering with places like the Tri-Lex Chamber of Commerce, the Small Business Development Center, the Pikes Peak Workforce Center, that we can ensure that those resources are available for our businesses and those employees or people who are looking to start a business or start a different career or buy a franchise, that they have the, the resources that they need. Also making sure that our local banks have the funding and the resources that they can offer to those business owners too, so that they can grow their businesses or start their businesses. We've already talked about this, but making sure that we have a diverse economy and we're not just relying on one type of industry. And then making sure that we improve the quality of life here through economic development. So partnering with our developers to make sure that they're providing things like parks and trails in their development that we're looking at when we're redeveloping our downtown, that we're making sure it's a walkable downtown that has amenities that we're looking for in our downtown. And then good governance, people want to know what to expect. You know, so they are, they're watching how we're making decisions today to understand how they're going to approach our planning commission, our town council, when they come and present these projects. Does anyone have any questions before? There's some of our goals for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six are to make sure that we are smart and strategic about our community development, that we build partnerships, that we build a communications and marketing plan and that we are looking at strategic planning and financing for these projects as well. So going into some more detail about those. You know, the comprehensive plan, the twenty forty, we believe will be completed by December of twenty twenty-six. And that will really prepare us for what the future of Monument looks like. So what will, what will those future developments need to look like? And what might we need to change in order to facilitate that? You know, we might need to look at our, our code in order to make sure that we're able to do the things that we said and that the community said we wanted to do with that plan. We need to make sure our town codes allow us to do the business retract, retract attraction and retention and expansion that we talk about. And so we need to be making sure that those, once the plan is done, we need to make sure that we look at those codes as well. We need to engage the community to do this. So one way that we'd like to do this is to create an economic development citizens committee. We're hoping to kick that off in the next month or so. So that we can get people on this committee. So similar to our citizens service level advisory committee, we'll ask for members of the council. We might ask members from other agencies within the community and then business owners and residents to be a part of this as well, so we can have this dialogue of what we would like to see here in Monument and create a plan for business retention and our business attraction and things that will help the businesses in our community. And they, all of these opportunities are just going to help build the next, the next leaders so that economic development can continue to thrive into the future. So engaging these committee members so that then they might be the next planning commissioner members, they might be the next council members. So just getting more people involved in this topic.
Development citizens, citizens committee, I'll get there. Have we, as part of that, like somebody from FBLA or high school future business leaders? I'm assuming there's some kind of club in the high school that has, you know, that that works to, to do that. Are we considering?
Yeah, in fact, we have a meeting with the school district later this week where we'll be talking about how we can get our students more involved. We have DECA programs as well as FBLA and in both of our high schools. So I think that could be a possibility to invite them to be part of this. So we'll definitely look into that.
DECA is a good program too.
Yeah, as, as a lot of you have volunteered for those programs, those that really are our future business leaders. And I volunteered a few times and they, they continue to blow me away with just their presentations and their ideas. So I think that, you know, the future does not look so bleak. It's very bright. So in, in terms of partnerships, we, we are partnering with regional partners. So we, you know, a lot of us participate with Pike's Peak Area Council of Government. They just put together a community economic development plan that I participate in and are, I know that Terry Hayes has participated as well in that. We are talking with the Military Affairs Commission, so making sure that we're involved with what the military needs going forward from our communities as far as housing, as far as potential jobs for when people retire. So just really building those partnerships. But working with Colorado Springs Economic Development Office, so they, they say Colorado Springs Chamber and EDC, but really they're the Pikes Peak Region. So they have certified economic developers on staff. And so it's nice to be able to work with them on some of these projects as well. The state has an economic development office, the school district is important in these conversations as well as our local utility providers, the Chamber of Commerce, our developers. They're often the ones that are out there finding these companies too. So that's a really good partnership that we need to have with them and making sure that they're part of our vision as well. We'd also like to bring back our business retention and expansion program. So it's probably been about six years, but we were doing business visits. So we'd like to bring that back. I've been working with our clerk's office on business licensing to create a list of places that we would like to meet with and trying to schedule those meetings. So we are hoping in the very near future, we would like to have our first meetings here in July. Hardest part of that is getting businesses on their schedule. So, but our goal is to try and meet with several businesses for the remainder of this year and just visit with them. Understand what some of their challenges might be, what their plans are for the future. Let them know of any resources that might be available to them and just really get to know them and their future for their business plan here in Monument. And then we would also like to partner with our new hotels. So Polaris being a nice new hotel that's come to our region, and I know that there are several other ones. We could do some marketing to make sure that they know about Monument and our lake and some of the activities that we have here, make sure that they have the materials and they know to be sending people to Monument instead of to Colorado Springs as well. So we hope to have that information, kind of that marketing information to the hotel and other, other entities like that by the end of this year. We plan to develop a communication and marketing plan. We used to do this years ago and then it kind of fell by the wayside, but we'll bring that back. So on our social media, we'll be doing some celebration. We just had some new businesses open, we had a new business expand. Aniversaries, you know, we have some businesses that have been in that community for forty-plus years. We should be celebrating that. And so you'll see that on our LinkedIn and on our Facebook and our other social media sites. And we'll be keeping track of those a little bit differently to, to, to be able to show like the longevity of our businesses in the community. We think that we have a great public art program that could be another tourism attraction here. So working with Cassie and our, our other team, team members, we have a little arts committee on what we can be doing to expand that program. Even to just advertise it more and talk about it more with our community. We have some opportunities potentially with developers to expand that program as new developer, new developments come on board. So we want to be sure that we're really talking about the great things here in Monument and how we can be really showcasing those a lot better. So we plan to do that by the end of this year to create that plan. I, I believe Mary LaKine told me that he has engaged with the State Front Range Passenger Rail Project. So we think that's an opportunity for us as well.
Yes, I, I'll be representing Pike's Peak Area Council Governments on the Front Range Passenger Rail. They're calling it RT FRP, I don't know, I've, I've yet to, I have yet to be sworn in. But that should be coming and I have a meeting scheduled for them sometime this month.
Okay.
And I will keep us, obviously, we're going to want to know what we want to get out of it. The region wants to know what they're going to get out of it because it's, we're not on their immediate forecast, but.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good project though, that we should be in dialogue with them. We should be trying to understand how this can help us with our community. You know, it's basically a rail project going from, I think, Publo, if not even further south, to the metro Denver area. So stops along the way and, you know, additional transportation efforts to bring people through here would be great. So CDOT is another partner that we need to work with. There's some talk that they might be doing some work at the Park and Ride on Woodmore Drive. So having some conversations with them about what that might look like and if there's any opportunities there that might help us bring more people into town. And we really need to get better organized with grants and making sure that we're seeking opportunities that will help us with these initiatives as well. So there is, there are economic development grants out there and we just hope to get a better handle on what those are and how those might be useful to, to us. Any questions so far or comments? I feel like I'm talking really fast, so feel free to. And so again, we, we just talked about one thing that we think is our very first next step. And in addition to the business visits is to create an economic development committee. And we believe that this will, this committee will be useful to helping us make plans and how we're going to attract business and economic activity to our community. And so we'd like to get that started. We'll be, I'll bring, be bringing that back to ask for council members that would like to be part of that committee so that we can make plans. The most important thing to remember about economic development is it doesn't happen overnight. It's, it's a long, a long game. Like I, I don't, I do not know if Panda Express was the results of our work in twenty nineteen, but I'd like to think so. So, you know, that, that's six years ago that we talked with them about coming here. And, you know, now we know that they are coming. And so, you know, it does take time and so we don't always quite have the population that we need to meet some retail and restaurant metrics, but we'll work on that. And we, we would like to have more, more jobs here in Monument as well. So, but that Monument twenty forty will really help us understand what the community wants going forward for the future. We should be looking at attracting so that we have better control over achieving that vision. So that, that is the end of what I have to present to you, but I'm happy to answer any questions or gather any thoughts that you might have.
Do you have the, the committees fully staffed now?
We have not asked for anybody to be on this committee, but for our citizens level, service level advisory committee, yes, we have that full.
Okay, good.
We could use another business person on that committee. But if, if we don't get one, we can still move forward with what we have, but we could use another business person.
Excellent, thanks.
Right, any other comments or questions from the council?
So thank you for the presentation. The, the one thing that I keep running through my mind is years ago, when we were looking at development plans and it was said that we need to have more rooftops here to attract more businesses. But we're never going to be the size of a Colorado Springs or a Castle Rock. We're wedged in between those two. So how does, I mean, are there thoughts from, from staff on how to overcome that? The, the lack of rooftops, but still getting businesses to say that because of our location, we'll have people that are outside the town of Monument that are in the Tri-Lakes area that will come here
Right.
to partake in your shop or your store, your business in vice, driving twenty, thirty, forty minutes away. Is that, is that something, is that the, like, the avenue that they're trying to pursue to attract that or is there other?
So typically, we don't use town population when we're looking, when we're talking with a prospective business. We're looking at trade area population. So that's a radius of population versus town limits population. Because frankly, they kind of really, the town limits population doesn't really mean that much to them from a retail restaurant, you know, customer perspective. So when they're looking at the customer base, they're looking more at radiuses. So what are our five-mile radius, what are our ten-mile radius, what are our twenty-five-mile radius? But that does have to fit into their business model and not every business is going to fit in, in our population. And so, but that's kind of the, the art of economic development is to find the right fit, you know, that's going to fit. We want them to be successful. We don't want them to come here and, you know, not have the customer base that they need, but knowing that they're not just looking at our, you know, twelve thousand population, they're looking at a trade area population. Because the people from El Paso County outside of town limits come to Monument to shop and get their gas or, you know, go out to eat and things like that. So those are the, the metrics that they're looking at. And most of the time, they have that information even before we give that to them.
Well, the radius thing is tough to work here because we have protected property around us. And, but however, you know, you've been here long enough for sure. The Castle, Castle Rock started with outlet stores when it was way smaller than Monument. And so some type of destination, I mean, even a, I mean, we don't really need this now, but even like a Bass Pro Shops or something like that, people will drive for those. So, I mean, that's kind of probably where we need to head in order to get businesses here, destination businesses.
Right, and looking at our shopping centers, making sure those, those anchors are there and that will help fill in the, the rest of the shopping centers as well. So we have, we have some work to do on that, on that aspect. But it's also that, you know, they're looking at where people are going. So they're looking at who's going to Castle Rock, they're looking at who's going to Colorado Springs. And they, and if they have something in that market too, you know, they want to be careful to not jeopardize that as well. So honestly, businesses are usually smarter than we are when they're looking at where they want to come. So they have a lot of that information where we don't always have that information. So they're looking at their customer base, but those are the conversations that we're having. We're trying to show them, you know, it's not just Monument people, it's people from Larkspur, it's people from Palmer Lake, it's people from North Colorado Springs that don't want to fight crowds, you know, those kind of things. Or people coming from Denver going to Publo that are stopping here. So those are the conversations that we're generally having with them.
Okay. Anybody from staff? Okay, then we'll adjourn until we start the meeting in less than thirty minutes.
I thought you would have a lot more conversation and questions.
Oh, come on, Google one, Google a question for Madeline.
No, you don't have to, I mean, I just thought.
I guess, consequently, I would throw in that your, your point is valid, we're, we're competing with, because we don't have the rooftops and actually Mayor Potem King, you also made, made the point, it's not, it's not necessarily circles, it's distance. And the compet, the problem we have and then all markets have is once you're in the car, you can go anywhere you want. So if, if you're, if you're, if you're that person who leaves her home, goes to a certain store and then plans to go to that next one and it's not within a certain vicinity around here, they're just going to go to the next place if that's really where they want to go. So it's our job to kind of figure out where that next place that they, they want to go and then convince that business to come here. And that might require expedited entitlement or development review process. It might require incentivizing through, either through tax rebate or per, certain services that they might not get. It all depends on how badly you want to compete with that other market that's just down the street, whether it's Northgate or it's Castle Rock. And so those are going to be the tough decisions we're going to have or in discussions that we're going to have with you that if you really want this business to, to fit in, it's, there's a gap here, we don't have, we don't have a gap. We don't have a gap here, we really like a gap. How, how do we get them here? If that's something we really want, well, let's see, let's list, let's list all the different, the different alternative ways to convince them that this is the right market or take a chance with us. And you're going to have to make the decision if that's the policy you want to, that's the policy that you want to establish to attract that business that otherwise would have gone up to Castle Rock or would have found themselves down in Northgate. So it's not going to be easy and you're not going to like some of the conversations you're going to have because you're going to have to choose whether you're going to want to assist one or the other. And, and that's where this, this citizens committee is going to be so, so important to you because you're going to let them do a lot of the work and, and thought and justification when they, and then bring it to you so you can make that call. But economic development's hard. So it's not going to be, it's not a matter of just waving your flag and say, come here. They're, these, these people, they're, they're business people, they're trying to figure out where are they going to make some money and where are they going to attract the most customers and where are they needed? And then we're competing with other markets around the country. Where do I want to, in my portfolio, where do I want to open that next Gap store? I might want to focus in on South Carolina rather than, or Boise, Idaho or wherever instead of coming here. So it's, it's, you're going to have to really turn on, turn your light really bright to attract them. And you might find yourself having to, to give a little to make it happen.
Well, it seems to me that it's a catch-22. You know, the businesses look for opportunities to make the money, they look for rooftops, you know, we'll put that in, in air quotes. And, and the, and the residents. You know, we'll put that in, in air quotes. And, and the, and the residents look for convenience. So they're not necessarily complimentary. And I think that's what I'm hearing you say. So it's one depended on the other, depending on the other. Again, it's a catch 22. Which one do you pick today? Because tomorrow might be different.
You're definitely setting a policy or a tone with the marketplace and with your residents. And you have to figure out what your priorities are. And that's what this, that's where Monument 2040 is going to be so important. When we come back on the 21st and show you the existing conditions report, I know it was eye opening to me, but I'm not from here. I think you're going to find it eye opening as well. You're going to see your marketplace is done differently from that existing conditions report. And the commercial, the, the retail and the, the business, the business, businesses are looking to come into this area. They already know a lot of what we just found out in our existing conditions report, and they're making their decisions based on that. So we have to convince them that we're worth the risk. Or we, or they're missing something in, in their analysis that makes us a better place to, or a good place to come.
When are we going to see that?
It's actually published already. So if you go onto our website under the comprehensive plan or you go to monument2040.com, you'll see that the document has been published. And you'll get a full presentation and hopefully a discussion about it on the 21st.
That's the combined with the planning commission study session.
Okay, anything else? All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate. I call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, Monday, July 7th, 2025. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Simpson, will you take role?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim King.
Here.
Councilmember Rukonic.
Oh, here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Councilmember Frito.
Here.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Here.
And Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Okay. Mr. Cole, any disclosures of conflicts of interest for this meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I did not receive any disclosures of conflicts of interest.
Okay. Before us, we have a consent agenda. Is there any items in the consent agenda that we need to discuss or modify or anything like that?
Yes, please. I would like to remove the meeting minutes of June 16th for revision and resubmission on June, on, uh, July 21st. Also, I'd like to have discussion about the invoices over $25,000.
Oh.
And I would like to ask a question about the chip seal. And it's, it's fine that it's, it could be a Madeline question.
Madeline, do you, do you chip seal now?
I do not.
It's not really about the chip seal, but I'm just looking at projects that we have going on. And I know we budgeted for those, but with the, you know, projection of revenue shortfalls, are these items that we can put off or should we put off? I, and I completely understand why we're doing them to keep preventative maintenance up. But so I just kind of wanted your input on that.
Well, I, I think we need to, to keep up with our, our road maintenance projects. And, and I believe that this, these would still fit within our 2025 amended budget. So I would not see any reason to do that, but I will definitely confer with finance and public works to see. But without having that conversation with them prior to the meeting, I, I don't know if we, we should probably have a conversation about that.
Sure. And that's something you could, you could drop if you, if you needed to or wanted to without, you know, coming back here for approval or anything, as long as we give you the approval, correct?
Correct, because you'd be approving the contract. And if for some reason we chose to reduce the amount of the contract, we wouldn't need to bring that back to you.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to keep those conversations going until we can kind of determine where the economy is heading.
Sure.
Okay. And then there's one thing on that contract that's different from the packet. What I have printed out does not include the line item or the, the statement total not to exceed 100,000. That is missing on the signed document in front of the document I need, I need to sign.
Okay, we can make sure you get the right one because if you look at it in your board packet, it does say total not to exceed.
Right. I'm just saying what was printed out is missing that.
Okay.
That statement.
We'll make sure that you get the right one to sign.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I, I also understand the importance of the, like, the question that Mayor Pro Tim asked is, I think, valid and needs to have a discussion. But at the same time, I understand that the, uh, these projects, the chip seal projects for our roads is part of the regular scheduled maintenance. And without doing it, you're just accelerating the wear and tear on the road without, you know, that's going to cause, it's going to cost more in the long run.
And, and I completely understand that too. So.
I do have a procedural question. So are we making the X over 25 a discussion item then?
No, discussion.
The three said.
Yeah. So because we're pulling it out of the consent agenda, right?
Pulling, yes.
You want to pull.
B and C out of the consent agenda.
Why are we pulling B out of the consent agenda?
Because it needs to be revised.
I'm sorry, C.
For discussion.
So if we want to make it A, D for the motion?
Hang on.
Because if we're going to discuss it, then.
It's a quick discussion, but.
Well, is, is anything materially going to change about the invoices?
No.
So then let's just discuss.
Okay.
We're not going to pull it out.
Actually, I have a question.
Okay, then.
The question is, is there a reason why we cannot, the invoices over $25,000 need either the payee or the payee on the amount right there? And I'm just talking about that for transparency.
So we do include it in the council packet, but if we had a whole bunch of invoices, that could make the agenda then quite long. But if that's a council, if that's the direction council would like us to go, we can, we can certainly do that. There, in this instance, there's only one invoice. If there were multiples, we could also add a summary memo. But I think adding it to under, so it'd be kind of like a sub item under C. The agendas would start to get very long then. I don't, but that's completely up to you.
No, I think your idea about the summary is a good idea.
Okay.
I, I like that.
So you, you want, what, what's in the summary, other than it saying that we are going to? The point of this is to show the invoices that will be approved in the consent agenda. You want there to be additional statements in the agenda to indicate who the payer, payees are?
That would be the summary that.
In the summer?
That Madeline just mentioned.
The summary would be part of the, the packet, not the agenda.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Part of the packet.
Okay. And that's only if there's more than one invoice, correct? Or would you still like to see, okay, just if there's more than one invoice? Okay.
Okay. So in essence, then we're just removing 4B from the consent agenda.
Yes. Okay. So it's a modification to the consent agenda to remove 4B.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda modified with 4B removed.
Second.
Okay, so that we're missing, we're missing somebody. How did that pass? Only six?
There she is.
Oh.
There is a late reaction.
Okay.
She was thinking about it.
All right. So that motion passes seven to zero. And as to the rest of the agenda, any modifications to the rest of the agenda? If not, I'll look for a motion. Anybody?
Make a motion to.
Approve the agenda.
The agenda with the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
The consent agenda should be different.
Second.
Oh, you're right. It is in there. Sorry. I, I guess I haven't read it. Okay. So never mind, we're good.
Okay.
So we'll move on to the first presentation, which is Dark Sky, Dan Underlater.
Good evenings, Mayor and Councilman. I've been asked to do just a brief introduction. Steve Decev is a local lighting manufacturer representative. He approached you at the last meeting saying he wanted to kind of share with you information about Dark Sky implementation and, and ideas on some policy. I want to make sure that you're aware that we're going to be talking about Dark Sky quite a bit during the Monument 2040 comprehensive planning update process. So I think this is a good introduction. Steve and I met earlier this year and actually began that conversation. So I think this is a good introduction for you as well, but we will be talking about it quite a bit during the, the comprehensive plan update process. I can only assume that we're going to probably come back to you with some recommendations for policy and ordinance change and, and, and establishing some form of Dark Sky priorities as we come out of the comprehensive plan process, update process. So with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Steve and let him come up and show you what he knows. Thanks.
Sign in.
Thank you for the opportunity again. Hit a quick presentation last time. Next slide, please. What I want to talk about is briefly how Monument Dark Sky will protect, honor and restore the beauty of the night sky. Next slide, please. Do you guys know that Colorado has more certified dark sky places than almost any other state, which is a really great thing what we're doing in the state? Next slide, please. Look at this picture. This is from Crestone, Colorado. This is one of the dark sky communities. Just imagine what this place looked like 100 years ago. It's just amazing. I mean, you can always touch the sky. So these are, this is on Dark Sky Colorado's website, and they really go into just our state, what they're doing for dark sky. Next slide, please. Why dark sky matters? The night sky plays a key role in virtually every domain of environmental conservation. 80% of migrate birds travel by night and rely on natural conditions of darkness to navigate. Some species even rely on starlight to add orientation and navigate. Insects, mammals, amphibians, reptiles, and even plant life take cues from the natural rhythms of the day and night. This influences growth, hunting, pollination, foraging and mating. And number two, the way the natural arc of the day and night synchronizes our behavior and benefits our health is incredibly strange and beautiful. And the relationship between artificial light at night, which is alan and melatonin, as well as the health effects, the melatonin suppression have been extensively studied. And a growing body of research has linked artificial light and night, especially blue light from screens and LEDs to a variety of negative health outcomes. Next slide, please. This is another dark sky, lights out Colorado as a collateral effort by Dark Sky Colorado and Den Robert Bond to protect migrating birds in Colorado from the devastating effects of light pollution through public education. And the problem is each year in North America, between 3.5 and 4 billion birds take part in migrations of thousands of miles and more than 80% of them travel at night navigating with the night sky. Artificial lights can attract and disorient birds, resulting in inability to navigate to their destinations, expend already limited energy resources. The exhaustion can leave them vulnerable to threats, including predators, collisions with buildings and the ability to find food. Of course, the solution, fortunately, the simple solution of shielding or turning off lights can help birds navigate. It is particularly important to take these measures as early in the evening as possible as migrants begin their nocturnal migrations at dusk during spring and fall migration periods. In addition in, in to helping birds, these efforts have the additional benefits of reducing energy uses and saving money. And there are two simple actions people can take to have a big impact on birds. Shield outdoor lights to prevent light from being emitted upwards and turning off the lights as early as possible during bird migration season, April through May and August through September. So it's a good, good thing on Dark Sky Colorado. Next slide, please. This is on the Flagstaff website. You can see there's a constellation to your left. This is from Flagstaff, Arizona, 2020. You can clearly see the constellation in the stars. The same picture from Phoenix, Arizona, where are the stars? They're completely gone. This is a, this is in the same state, but like I said, last time, Flagstaff is going dark sky. They have been since 2000, and now Phoenix has really got a big problem with their night sky. Next slide, please. I think I showed this picture to you last time. What is light pollution? Light pollution is artificial light introduced into the natural light, especially where it is not needed or wanted. This unwanted light appears in the sky, causing sky glow, obscuring the stars and creating perpetual twilight. Shining into your yards or through your windows into houses caused light trespass and shining into your eyes causes glare. Now, in this picture, you see Flagstaff, and you can see this is six, 27 kilometers, this is 16 miles high. And look at Cheyenne and Fort Collins, that white spot is a, that's the glare, that's the white pollution there. So you can see that Cheyenne, Wyoming is getting, is destroying the night sky along with Fort Collins. And I think I mentioned to you last time, Flagstaff is that amber color, so you can see the stars at night. They have the University of Northern Arizona, plus they have that, that telescope I said that shines the Pluto. Next slide, please. I want to talk about some areas that are going dark sky. Flagstaff is at 7100 elevation, operates at 2700K amber color with a population of 76,500. And you can still see the stars at night with the Lowell Observatory, like I mentioned, home of Pluto and having the University of Northern Arizona. Now, Durango, Colorado, this year is at 6500 elevation with a population of 20,000. And this year, this city has implemented dark sky regulations to protect the sky. Section 4323 lighting allowance, and this is correlated temperature is limiting no more than 2700K. So it's going below, this is that really yellow color. Other Colorado cities, cities changing towards dark sky is Boulder. You see the color temperature shall not be below, should not be, is below 3,000. Laramie County, Colorado is 14-10, 10 exterior lighting Kelvin properties. This is also dealing with open spaces, shall not be greater than 2700K. So you're seeing some cities that are really implementing. Cities include Bellevue, Burt Hoad, Drake, Estes Park, Fort Collins, Glen Haven, La Porte, Livermore, Loveland, Masonville, Redfeather, Timotham, Wellington and Windsor. So you can see that these cities are now joining and going to dark sky. And our neighbor next door, Douglas County, next to county line, only use lighting sources with correlated temperature no higher than 3,000K. And this is why I'm here today to talk to you why is Monument, which is at 700, 700 elevation, population only 15,000 and located at the highest point on the I-25 corridor, operating service stations, shopping centers, restaurants, fast food locations, residential properties and street lighting at 5,000K compared to Flagstaff, Durango and other cities in Colorado. Next slide, please. One of the biggest, one of the biggest challenges that Flagstaff is going through, and we're going through this too, is dealing with the gas stations of cutting over lighting. This seems to be the biggest challenge to communities is dealing with gas stations and over lighting. Next slide, please. Across the country, lighting at service stations has escalated tremendously. New fixtures are brighter. New fixtures are brighter and have more blue-rich white than ever. They tend to spread light everywhere, especially to the side and to the morris eyes, into neighboring properties and up into the night sky. Service station owners responding to the stiff competitive pressures are seeking to convince potential customers that their stations are safer or more attractive than the one across the street. Industry representatives selling the newer fixtures often describe the effort of this poorly shielded over brightness as sparkle. The Flagstaff Dark Sky Coalition regularly receives complaints about their service station glare. Glare interferes with the ability of motorists to safely see the nearby roads and may cause drivers to squint in attempts to detect pedestrians or hazards on the roadway. For older drivers, this potential, this problem is especially severe. And extreme, extreme lighting levels can hamper the visibility to service station customers too. This is particularly troublesome when leaving the brightly illuminated areas and entering into a more moderate illuminated roadway with the eyes that have been accustomed to the high lighting level. And then a study by the Lighting Research Center at Resonal Polytechnic Institute found that the percentage of drivers turning into a service station and the mean number of gallons of gasoline sold daily increase immediately following the change of lighting from glaring drop lenses, non-cot off fixtures to a fully shielded lighting fixtures. The study suggests that better lighting actually encourages drivers to use responsible lit stations. Next slide, please. This is a, this is an overlit station right here. And so you can see by the overlit that this is completely way higher than it should be. Next slide, please. You can see also that the glare not only hits the ground but is going in upward position. So this is also a, a very, for the service station can definitely cause a dark sky problem. Next slide, please. This is what is really what I'm trying to convince to Monument and also all these exterior lighting is this station has a lighting level for about eight foot candles, about one-tenth of the level of the typical overlit station. A foot candle is the lighting level that you would see one foot away from a typical candle. Roadways and parking lots are typically illuminated to one to two foot candles. And you can see that outside the canopy, outside the tanks, all that's black now. So it's, you can see it, you can see it very clearly, but you can see it's totally dark sky in this, in this particular example. Next slide, please. This is another one. This station has a lighting level about eight foot candles, about one-tenth of the level of a typically overlit station. A foot candle is the lighting level you would see one foot away from a typical candle. Roadways and parking lots are typically illuminated to one to two foot candles. The Safeway service station below is about lit to 10 foot candles. The lighting level under the canopy of the rebuilt Maverick Station just north of US 89 is about nine foot candles. And then I put a footnote on the bottom, Douglas County, section 1026, the total light output other than illuminated areas of a service station may not exceed 15 foot candles. So even Douglas County is coming on board. Next slide, please. So I'm going to talk about light pollution solutions. These are simple things that I talked to Dan about and just want to let you guys know about some of the things that we can do to help. Next slide is education. Education is essential to success. Education about light pollution and the importance of dark nighttime environment is essential key to raise public awareness, which can lead to changes in policy and behavior. We ask ourselves, why is there so much bad light? It's mostly due to a lack of awareness by builders, contractors, owners, and operators, the public governmental staff. And the lighting industry conflicts interests, apathy, and inertia. You can even see that example also in the auto industry. You're, I have a 2015 Honda Accord and I have yellow lights on my car. And then I'm driving down I-25 and it looks like I got a train behind me and it's a brand new F-150 Ford pickup. So even the lighting in the auto industry has gotten out of whack. Next slide, please. So here's some four different examples. Dark Sky friendly lighting takes into consideration four essential design principles. Number one, we talk, we're going to talk about the shielding of light. So you're pushing the light downward. And number two is the color of light. And you're going to see that the warmer the light, the more you can see the stars at night. The third one is the intensity, because you could have a yellow light, even though it's yellow, if you have a higher lumen, it's, it's still going to run across. So we have talked about the intensity of light and then the period of light. I'm in Woodmore, so you know, it's, we're trying to encourage motion sensors and having your lights turned on all night. So that's another thing to help the wildlife. Next slide, please. So here's some of the acceptable fixtures you can see. The unacceptable fixtures to your left, you can see all things are open. You know, if you look at Safeway parking lot, you can look at all these different things. You'll see wall packs that are going outward. And then you can see the acceptable ones that are going downward. And then you can see that they did a really good job here. This is Dark Sky International offers certification that fixtures meet the standards for dark sky quality. Such fixtures must be feel fully shielded and minimized. Blue light, which is DSI standards, implement only as a requirement that the color temperature must be 3,000 K or less. And if you look at this picture, this is, I had a discussion with a person. If you have a 360 degree lamp that's blowing everywhere, it doesn't mean that just because you have a white light, you can see better. You can see that there's, there's a person underneath that very bad light, but you can barely see him. Then you look at the bad light and you can see him a little bit better. And then you have the better and then you have the best. So basically for security reasons for a bank or for grocery stores, it's not that you're shooting the light out that you're going to be able to see people, it's actually going to be going down. So for a lot of parking lots, you can either have, you know, you have shielding or like I know at the Dollar Tree, they had slip fitters, but now they're putting it 90 degrees. So you would be able to see better with the direction of a shielding fixture. Next slide, please. Okay, this is where it gets interesting here, because when you talk about warm light, that's what I'm talking about is that amber color. If Monument goes to amber color, you're going to see more stars at night. And what happens on the color spectrum, you ever guys see a saltwater aquarium? You're going to see it's very, very, very blue. It's because the color temperature is going past 10,000. So the more you get past, and you could go to a Home Depot and you just turn the bulb around and it'll show you what the color temperature is. So we want to stay in that warm area since we're in a high elevation, mountain elevation here, rather than going to the 5K, 6K, where now at our elevation, we're destroying the dark sky. Next slide, please. This one here, lumens and foot candles is really important because lumens is the power of the light. So when you go again to a store, you'll see, okay, it's 2,700 K. But if it says it's 2,000 lumens, well, in Douglas County, you only can have an 800 lumen light at your front door. So what happens is even though you have the right color, you could have the more power of the light. And that's what they call for light trespass. So I had my neighbor across the street, they had a light, but it went past the, the street and then halfway up my property. So they had an overpowered lamp and it needed to be shielded. So that's why when I went to Woodmore a year and a half ago, they called me back three months ago and they said, okay, we were having complaints of neighbors. And that's what the lumens and foot candles mean when you have that, when you want to have the measure of light. Next slide, please. One of the areas for residential, if you want to down the road, think about it, is motion sensors are really good for, for, for lighting for night, so that if, like if a deer goes by or somebody walks along, then the lights would go on. And then, of course, that's why I showed you earlier about the birds at night. You know, having that timer and the lights would go off instead of having lights going all night long. Next slide. Okay, this is something I got from Deanne Horn. She is Mountain View Electric and she gave me a nice email. She said, Steve, yes, Tri-State does offer rebates for pole mounting lighting. Pole mounting LEDs have a project cap of $20,000. Anticipated incentives are subject to Tri-State review and application information. And then she gave me an itemized invoice per cost is required to participate in the program. So that's kind of neat that Monument has a $20,000 cap. And what that means is that every fixture that you purchase, you would get 25% off of that fixture. So that's, lighting is probably the fastest way that you can get your money back. It's a really good way of doing it. Next slide, please. I did a quick count just for kickers. You got about 85 poles. If you wanted to do a pilot program, you got four around your city hall. You've got $13 tree, 15, and I didn't include the wall packs or the canopies. But you can see that 85 fixtures, if I sold it for $200 for say, with the fixture with the, with the adapter, I mean, I would sharpen my pencil to get you guys the best deal. But your, your rebate would be 42, $4,250. I also spoke to Brian, who is the, I used to, my other lighting company work with Riviera Electric. They're over on the frontage road. I talked to him, he said he could work with you if you didn't have the labor to do something like this. You could also do something more in stages. So I'm just giving you the opportunity to say, where do you think you'd like to do a project? Where do you think would work going forward? Next slide, please. That's just a, so they, she just basically broke down the, the pricing. I'm not going to get up to 400 and some dollars. I think our lumens would be around 20,000, but not that price. I would knock that price probably in half for that. Next, next slide, please. This picture, I took a picture of the ones to the left. This is a picture of Home Depot, so Coles, Home Depot, a lot of those areas have the metal halide that's shooting downward. Okay, so that fixture is running, that's probably a 250 watt metal halide. I could bring it down to 85 watts. So what happens when you go from metal hide to LED, I can cut the energy by three quarters. On the Home Depot side, that's at 400 watt. So you can think for that property, the amount of energy to be saved, we can knock that by three quarters. So that's crazy, because they're running metal halide. And the picture to the right, that's on Jackson Creek, but it only goes up to where the Home Depot intersection is. And what they do, they just have some LED screw in corn cobs in there. And then from then on, you have your fixtures. And then next slide is questions. So I just wanted to give you just a little bit of a, don't want to take too much time, but I just kind of want to give you just a big snapshot of if Monument were to go, if you guys decided to go on Dark Sky, I would, I would encourage every one of you guys get on KOA or something and get your, get your faces on the TV, because I think that Monument is a spearhead. You're at the highest elevation. It, it'll take, it'll make, it'll put you on the map. It'll say things about Colorado Springs. It'll say about neighboring, yeah, Palm Lake and also Douglas County. I think you guys could really make a, I mean, if you have the, once you give the people the education, they get it. I was at the Fourth of July seeing fireworks with a friend and we were talking about lighting and then he got it. It was like, you know, he understands what dark sky is. So I think you guys could really make a, you guys all could be a spearhead for dark sky. I really do. So that's all I wanted to share.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I volunteer Senate to be on TV.
So I will, I will say to give you a high five here. When, when you came in the first time, because I had been thinking about it anyway, I switched all the lights on my house to 3,000 K or below, and they're all downlights. And it made a, it made a huge difference just in the ambiance of the house, but it certainly didn't take away any safety as far as walking around and seeing what you're doing. So, but it did make a huge difference. So if everybody did stuff like that, you know, it definitely make a positive.
Can I get a lighting credit for the make mine brighter since you made yours?
We're going to take the jelly lights down.
The jellyfish lights, yeah, you get to fight Carol about that.
So thank you.
You're welcome.
One question, Steve, did you guys have? You mentioned a lot, a lot of correlation between altitude or elevation. Where we're at, could you explain that just a little bit, how, why it affects dark sky so much more because we're, we're higher?
We're higher and we're closer to the stars at night. So that's why when you look at Flagstaff, and that's why having 75,000 people with the university and a telescope going to Pluto, they are able to put a Home Depot or Lowe's and still make the star shine. And that's why I'm saying if you guys made a decision to say, we want to be dark sky at the same elevation, that's going to just change the whole, I mean, you guys are going to change everything in the front range. You really are.
Thank you so much. With the interstate going between the two sides, though, what, what's the state doing? Because if we all were to do dark sky, the state doesn't have to comply. They, that whole section from Baptist to county line could remain as lit as, well, and sometimes they don't replace the bulbs and then you have no, it's very dark.
There are some fixtures that are 3K, there are some fixtures at 4K. When you, really quick, when you see a, an air, like a pole light flashing, that means the driver's gone, the driver's dead. And so at a times, a lot of lighting people will, will sell the cheapest fixture and it only has so many hours to go. And then also, so when you start seeing fixtures blinking up and going, that's a bad driver. And then they have to get a bucket truck and they have to do it. Another question I had for you since we're talking about this. How, do you have the resources to change lighting with your, or would you have to subcontract it to a electrical contractor?
Tom, we're good?
So you, so you could, you could then do, that's, that's huge. So you could actually change those 85 fixtures.
No, no, no.
No?
Those are private businesses, half the ones that you named are businesses, those don't belong to town.
Okay, so the ones that are, what are the ones that are not, so the ones that are not part of the town, that would be?
Went to a town building, it's part of the town. If you go to Safeway, it's the property owner.
Okay.
Or street, yeah, 105 is the county or the state.
So then would, would, how would that be implemented to retrofit like Durango's doing? Durango's retrofitting their existing businesses right now. So how would that?
Yeah, I guess I'm going to sit down.
Yeah.
Dan, how are we going to force everybody to go dark sky should we decide to do that?
Well, I don't want to use the word force. I'd like to use the word entice and support. It's create sunset provisions. There's many things we could do. We have to make sure that what are, what standard we establish is reasonable and works. And an education, I agree, is a big, is a big component to show energy savings. I like to go to stores that behave. So if I go to a store that's turned their lights down and I'll, I'll come back again. So I think that education's a big piece to that. And again, we're going to go through this, this exercise to help. I do like the idea of us setting ourselves as an example to those. But again, that we have to look at it the same way. We have to look at, does it, is it financially feasible to change them all out tomorrow? Or do we have to spread it out as we replace new light bulbs? And it's what, into what level are we doing it? Because we still want to have a safe community. We still want to be able to tell what colors the cars are in our parking lot. So we have to be, and he's not talking that way, but I'm, we have to be careful as we're, as we're, we're establishing the, the policy that it's, it's reasonable and real. So, and I will do that with you.
But also in our town ordinance, we already have instructions on like for, for residential, like here's the lighting fixtures that are allowed and here's what's not allowed. And, and a lot, a lot of what's allowed is kind of tailored, tailored or geared towards having dark skies.
And he and I, before the meeting, were discussing, we were talking about some older light fixtures that are out there that need to be changed out. The newer ones are actually much improved, they're more focused and shielded. But there are still quite a few that are out there that are older and bright and shining just about everywhere. So we'll have to change our code and as, as things progress in government and governance, it, things sometimes happen slowly, but we can make the change.
Well, but going forward would be the quickest fix or anything new.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll be bringing you examples. So we, we have some that are coming up in the near future. Another thing we need to keep an eye on are fixtures that don't necessarily show up in a, in a photometric drawing, in a photometric plan that we receive. Because we, we want to, we want to make, our photometrics are set up to make sure that the parking lot and the property is well balanced and well lit. And sometimes the decorative lights aren't included in that. And, and we've talked about that for the car wash, for instance. Those are lights that weren't included in the photometrics, because who, who knew? They're, they're really decorative, just trying to show off that area. They're unshielded, they're cold, and they're, and they're bright. So our ordinances could do, have some updates to it. The, we also have, our ordinance does have some loopholes too, because it does refer to some, certain standards that, some industry standards that aren't necessarily dark sky compliant. So we're going to have to go through those and do a, an audit of our, our lighting requirements. But again, we have to talk about how far we want to go and what we're trying to accomplish. So thank you, Steve, for that presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And then Steve, just, you know, you, you mentioned about the bird migration. So a tool that, that I'm familiar with and I use and I promote is birdcast.info. It's a website that will show, because the migration periods that will come across Colorado going north and south during the times of year when they do migrate from, basically from- from, basically from two thousand feet above. So in my line of work, I, I watch that, I monitor that site and use that for forecast because of the aircraft that we deal with. So it's just a, a tool to put in your presentation or to use to really narrow down for the dark skies and worrying about the migration patterns. Or another one is ebird.org is the second one to use. So I use those two religiously. Share with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a full slate of business topics to get to. She comes. First one, ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty five, an ordinance to repeal, re-adopt title thirteen of the Monument Municipal Code, tagged team by Ms. Phillips and Mr. Darnish.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jennifer Phillips, Finance Director, I'm here to present two items to you this evening. The first one is the repealing and readoption of Title thirteen. So quick overview, why are we doing this? What was the process? Summary, summary of the changes. I always like to highlight especially any policy impacts or, or decisions that you need to be aware of so that you understand some of the recommendations that we're making. And then the overall recommendation is to adopt the ordinance. The purpose is to conform with the whole room charter. We want to update the Monument Municipal Code. We want, we removed all fees. So I've talked a couple of times about the fee study that's happening. And so fees really shouldn't be in the municipal code. They really should be adopted by, by resolution. And so we removed all of those. And when our fee study is complete, we'll be bringing those fees to you. And then they'll be referenced, we'll have them in a resolution rather than in the ordinance. We want to align with town practices and then just some general cleanup. So just the process, staff went through. So we have the attorney, we have public works, myself, Laura. I see chronic and then I have to like, so all of us have different expertises. And so we all looked at it from different perspectives. And then we made our recommendations to the town attorney. And the town attorney made the final review. And what you see before you, you have both a red line version and the final version for your review. So if you have questions, legal questions would go to the town attorney. Any kind of procedural questions with regards to the water fund or the water system would go to Tom. And I'll try to answer any questions potentially about sort of the finance aspect of this. So a quick overview of what we did, we added some definitions. Rates and fees will be set by resolution, as I mentioned. It delineates some powers and duties for the Public Works Director. And this is a very important change. I want to make sure that I highlight this. So we're requesting that in, in the ordinance, all water accounts will be under the property owner's name. And the reason we're asking for this is when there are rental properties. So right now, a property owner can either have the water in their own name or they can have the tenant. So what's happening is if it's in the tenant's name, you have someone move in and then the water billing goes to that person. And then that person moves out and it goes back to the, to the property owner. Then a new person moves in and it goes back to the tenant. And then that tenant moves out. And so from a labor standpoint and an efficiency standpoint, it's a, it's a lost cause for us. And so we're asking that the language be that all water accounts are in the property owner's name. That's a very important policy change I'd like to highlight. We also changed some standards or updated some standards with design and installation. We also added it's unlawful to misrepresent ownership. We added some language to enact emergency measures. We added conditions and limitations for the use of the town's water system. We increased tap fee changes from nine percent to twenty percent. So let me quickly explain what that is. So if during one of our fee sessions and, and you adopt a fee for tap fees, and a tap fee is when someone goes, taps into the water system, and that fee is at a certain amount. That fee stands for a forty eight month period of time. And so if a developer then comes in and says, and, and during that period of time, you've then again increased the fees, maybe you've doubled the tap fee for some reason. We had justification to do that. Because that developer had basically rights to that tap fee. In the past, we were charging nine percent more, we're asking for twenty percent more. So if there's a difference, if the tap fee for some reason goes lower, the developer would get the lower fee. If it goes up, they would pay no more than twenty percent more. So we thought that was reasonable. We also added some language related to utility billing in the collection process and also with regards to delinquent accounts. We clarified language related to the disconnection reinstatement of water service and added a process for owner disputes. We'd never had that. And so that's been added. And then we also added some language with regards to the water enterprise activity, to make water activity enterprise to make sure that it's this standard, I've talked about that, that this is a business account, right? This is an enterprise fund. And so just additional language was added to sort of re-fortify that, that this truly is an enterprise fund. We removed a whole section on the wastewater system because we don't have one. And we changed the authority from the mayor to the Public Works Director to investigate cross connection hazards and to discontinue service. That's a more appropriate authority.
I didn't know I could even, I didn't get to do it yet.
Too late. Yep, it's going to be too late. And so what we're asking for tonight is that you approve the ordinance that would repeal and readopt Title thirteen for the municipal code.
All right, I've got some questions.
Alrighty.
So the first thing is about rates and fees. So if you remove them with the readoption and we have to wait for the study to be done, what's setting the rates and fees?
You have them set now. So they've been, you have an approved set of rates and fees. And so we'll continue to use those and they're referenced in the ordinance to your most recent adoption of those rates and fees.
It's on the fee table.
In the fee schedule currently, I put in all of those water rates into the fee schedule because they were already passed via ordinance. And I felt that the, you know, the authority was given to set those rates. So I included them in the fee schedule so that citizens would have one place to shop and look for what their rates are versus going to our municipal code and hunting through, you know, all those pages to see the rate. So every rate that's being removed by this repealing and readoption is accurate and currently in our our fee schedule that's posted.
Thank you. And then my other item is for thirteen oh four thirty one D. I believe it says that the Public Works Director may delegate to any town employee. Keeps going by me. Permission to operate the water valves within the town's water system. For some reason, I feel like it should be any certified employee. Not Tom going, oh no, Jennifer, run down to this valve.
Here's a wrench.
And, oh, I mean, why are we allowing any employee to do it?
That's a problem.
He wants to keep his options.
I believe the intent behind that is to have the ability to utilize, I mean, reality is, we would most likely use any certified water operator, because we don't like everybody just moving valves. But if we got in a position where we needed to cycle a lot of valves or turn a lot of valves and the water guys are tied up with a brake, I could have a street employee or parks, as long as we gave them direction. It's really just a righty tighty, lefty loosey tool that's used to close.
So long as it's a correct one, though.
It would be, well, we would make sure they're on the right one. We wouldn't allow anybody to operate these without knowing exactly what they're doing. Would it be at our?
Authorized employee.
Can we make, can we get a list of authorized employees? I mean, I really, the water system is one of those things that have a security mechanism tied behind it. We don't want people messing with it. Any employee means any employee. I, I think that's too broad.
Well, we can make that change.
I don't know with the rest of the councils.
How about any public works?
Well, I'm fine with public works. At least you've narrowed it down to the department.
You wouldn't go outside of public works, right?
He said parks.
He said parks.
Yeah.
No, we wouldn't be expected to do anything like that. There's only so many valves that could be operated at the same time.
So Jennifer won't be ever shutting a valve off.
It's your big chance.
Something for me.
Do you, town attorney, do you have a suggestion?
Instead of having the language delegate to any town employee, we could say delegate to any town public works employee, just add those two words to that section thirteen oh four oh three one D. Put that in the motion.
Okay. And then I think there was one other thing that we talked about, you and I did, is this the right one, Bob, where there's a section in here about? What do you call it? The restrictions or that in this, this group here? Or is that Title six? Okay, nevermind. We'll hold off on it. Okay, so that's my comments for this one. I don't know if anybody else has.
I, I have a series, so if anybody wants to jump ahead. Okay, I have a series of comments and some questions. So on thirteen dash zero four zero three one in A and B, it says the Public Works Director shall, under the direction of the town manager, have charge of all town water work system. Is have charge the right words for that? Or would that be have control or does it matter? I'm not trying to get nitpicky. It's just read funny. There's a couple of places that are like that.
Yeah, I, I think that's a little bit of antiquated legal language. If you want to update it, I'm.
If you're good with it, I'm good with it.
I, I think it all means the same, but I, I do agree that it is kind of antiquated legal language.
And then on thirteen dash zero four zero seven zero, it talks about a permit being issued from the town. And then it talks about ninety days for the building permit to be getting issued. What permit would be getting issued from the town? Anybody know?
I believe the permits are when we issue the water taps. This prevents, by putting a time limit on it, prevents builders in coming in and buying two hundred water taps at one time.
Okay.
And then halfway through it, they walk away. Then we have language in there that, that says, once you get the permits, you're required to start construction within ninety days.
Okay, so that would be a water tap permit.
That's, that's what I'm thinking way. It's in chapter thirteen.
Okay.
Do with water taps.
All right. And so the ninety day window, I mean, I saw that it also had in there that if there was any delays on behalf of the building department, that you would automatically just approve the delay.
Yeah, depends on the reason. If, if there was, you know, middle of winter, bad winter and they just can't, you know, the risk is high when you dig in a winter to, to tap things, things along those lines.
Okay.
It's kind of way that, that little section is in there.
The permit was mostly what I was concerned about. On thirteen zero four one thirty, it says planning unit development, and it should be planned unit development. So that's a minor change. Okay, so question through, there's a couple of places in here. But it talks about forfeiting water rights upon annexation or rezoning, which is typically what we've been doing. But there's no forfeiture of water rights if somebody hooks up to the water system. And there's also no forfeiture of water rights if somebody is on a property that has a well and wants to hook up to the water. It's the public water system. So how is that dealt with?
Okay, on, technically you find that is, is part of when you do an annexation, you have turnover rights underneath the property to the town. And that's done by special warranty deeds for each aquifer. And the, the other time I've seen that happen is if if somebody is switching from a well, they're already in the town, but they're switching from a well to service from us. They would pay a tap fee and then required to turn over the, the rights to that well to the town. And we do a determination whether that's a viable well that we could use as part of our system. Or do we go through an abandonment or have the owner go through an abandonment procedure for that? That's, that's less likely to occur because we just haven't had the opportunities in the past. Annexations are, are more viable. You, you see those way more often. And so that we have control, what we don't want is somebody having service from the town and still having a well that they're using for their own purposes. And, and when you, when you have somebody that's in the town and they don't have, they don't have service yet, maybe because we're too far away. But through the process of annexation, they turn over the water rights, we still have control of that well. One of the example is, is the Tri-Lakes Fire Station.
Right.
They still have a well. We have water underneath the highway to them, but the reason why they haven't hooked up yet is because they're going through a design process to add buildings to that site as part of their training, training facilities. So until they settle that out, it didn't make a lot of sense to size a water line to go to their one building when they might need a bigger line to feed two or three buildings. That's kind of the, the, the rare thing that happens sometimes. Water service is there and they know they're obligated that the minute they finish the design for their maintenance facility and their training building, then, then they're going to be required to tie into us. And at that time, they'll turn over the well to us.
So I guess the mechanism to control this from, like for this example, because if we're annexing property, it's a pretty easy thing or rezoning. But if we are, if somebody wants service outside of the town limits, like the trailer park or whatever, the mechanism to control that would be, we, we will give you water service in exchange for fifty percent increase or annexation, or you give us, give up your water rights.
The two properties right now that are currently being served by the town that are not in the town is a trailer park just down the road on Highway one oh five. And I believe the old, I don't know if it's, I don't think it's changed in this, this chapter. But it used to be that to serve water outside of our, our service boundary would require permission from the council. And when I brought those two entities to you at different times, they were through a resolution to approve water service, but we didn't, we couldn't ask them to give up their well because we don't own the water rights under the trailer park because they're physically in the town upon a lake.
Right, gotcha.
And the other is the RMG Engineering way up on Beacon Light Road.
Right.
They went through an annexation with us, but then pulled out halfway through. And I, that was, I don't know, three years ago, maybe two years ago. It's been a while. But they asked for water service anyway. And so we brought that to you through resolution. And you approved that. And that's, to us, it's not really a, an impact, much of an impact to us because it was a, it was the same size as a residential, one house being added to the system.
Sure.
But the only, that's how we control service outside of the town is on an individual basis by resolution that you would have to approve.
All right, on page six in here, it talks about the water use calculations. Like I think it's a half acre foot per house or something like that. Is, is that, I guess that's like a typical way of figuring that out. It wouldn't be like per bathroom or per square footage.
Well, no, there's a, there's a, we have a, an appendix called WA ten that references fixture counts. And if you're going to put a restaurant, then there's a number of fixture counts allowed. And that tells them how, how big a line they would need to supply so that they don't run short. You know, a, a, an example of that was Rosie's Diner. When Rosie's Diner was built, they should have had a one inch tap because of the size of the building and our fixture counts. At that time, they chose to put a three quarter inch line. So what happens is when they get busy in the summer and they're running the dishwasher and the bathrooms and everything else, they lose pressure. and they're running the dishwasher and the bathrooms and everything else, they lose pressure. Right? They can't keep up. They can't pull enough water through a three quarter inch line. And then they call us and complain and then we go tell them, there's nothing wrong with your system. You just have an undersized line. So that, that appendix determines how that's to, how, how many fixture counts, which determines the size of the water main. Okay, and then when when we go through the design review, we always want to know what size of line that that's going to be required. And then we know from our, our background that we have to calculate water demand, especially when a new subdivision comes in. If they're going to put three hundred homes, I know in my head already that's a hundred and fifty acre feet of water that we have to have show that we have the ability to provide before we'll ever issue a will serve letter. And a will serve letter is what they need to develop, right? If they don't have a will serve letter from us, they can't get water from us. And so half acre foot is a standard residential calculation. And when we did a study years ago, the route is the average house uses about point three two, roughly point three three, somewhere in that range. So half acre is very conservative as far as trying to calculate water demand.
Okay. This one, I'm not wait, I'm in the wrong section. That's why I don't see it. On thirteen eight zero eight. Sorry about that. I'm in the wrong section here. Now I'll ask you the next one and as I'm looking for this. So do we want to consider separate water taps for ADUs?
Um, I've always been impressed that if you're going to put a name to you, as long as it's on the same lot and can be fed from the house, water service from us, as long as it's captured through, through one meter, it's not a problem for us. But that's more a decision as a council, whether you're going to require a separate tap for an ADU. Normally it's one tap per address. So if that ADU has a separate address, like one sixty one something and, and ADU becomes one sixty one A or something.
Right.
Then it gets into the planning department process.
I, Dom, I think it's a policy conversation we should have. As soon as you start separating utilities and billing between the primary home and the ADU. Now you're tied, now you potentially have different ownership. Who's responsible for maintaining the property? Who do you need to call if there's an emergency? Um, so, um, and we can certainly come, go through that process, go through that, have that conversation with you as we're updating our code to comply with the current ADU standards that are coming from the state.
Okay. All right, so on thirteen zero eight one fifty. It says in here. It's a stupid date. Now I don't see it. It, it talked, well, it talks about a date of something being eligible. I just made a note to be eligible. And it says June seventeenth, two thousand and nine. So it was two thousand and nineteen. So it was something before that. Do you know what that references? Why that date? Is June seventeenth. It's a very specific date.
You said that was thirteen oh eight one five zero?
Yeah, and I'm not seeing it in here, so I probably.
Abandonment of water taps.
Yeah, I probably screwed up that number on here.
And that's, that's really, um, an important section. Um, because if we have somebody who's non, who's in a non-payment status and here we have a period exceeding twenty four months, it's deemed prima facie or facia, I'm not sure how to pronounce that. Evidence of abandonment of a tap. Uh, once the tap gets abandoned, what typically would happen is the town water department would go back to the water main and disconnect that water tap.
Yeah, I don't think this was about that, so I'll, I'll skip that. If it comes back up, I can send you. You can answer the question. Um, on, on thirteen thirteen zero eight two hundred. I got the right one on this one, too.
Under property?
No, well, the one, I screwed this up. The one that talks about grants. And it says that grants can't exceed ten percent of the revenue?
I think that has to do with the enterprise status.
Yeah, I can, I can jump in on that.
Okay.
Under Tabor, in order to operate as a water enterprise fund, uh, you can only receive, uh, less than ten percent of the revenues from state or local grants. So the water department basically has to support itself on its own revenues.
I see. So what happens with something like the Loop? And there's a lot of grant. Does that go into a separate enterprise? Because it's the Loop?
It would be. That would not be the town's water enterprise. That would be the Loop Authority.
Okay.
And, and that enterprise status is determined on a year to year basis. So you could receive the, you know, more than ten percent, destroy the enterprise status for that year and then the following year qualify as an enterprise.
I see. Okay. All right, that's all I had.
Any other questions or comments before I open the public hearing? Okay. This is a public hearing item. If there is anybody in the council chambers that would like to speak for or against the ordinance rewrite. Please come forward. Any online?
There are no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. Close public hearing. And I'll bring it back to council for further discussion or a motion.
I sent all my discussion points.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty five.
Modified.
Yes. An ordinance repealing and re adopting Title thirteen of the municipal Monument Municipal Code with the change. Thirteen oh four zero one.
Zero three one.
Cross three one. Be any public works employee.
One more thing. Hold on, one more thing. And then and then, and then thirteen dot zero four dot one thirty should be planned unit development instead of unit, unit development.
Thirteen.
Zero four one thirty.
One four one thirty.
To read.
Planned unit development.
Planned unit development. Instead of planning your development.
So second it.
I'll fight about it. Good job, new guy. And been seconded.
Yeah, we have motion.
Thank you for all the work on this. It's a big section. It's a big section in the code.
Okay, ordinance twelve twenty twenty five has been adopted seven to zero. Next up. Ordinance thirteen twenty twenty five. Is for Title VI. It's Phillips. You got this one solo this time. It's the animals.
Of what I'm going to discuss. Of this, the process we went through, summary of some changes, and then the recommendation. So again, very similar to the last item, this was to conform with the homeroom charter. We want to update the Monument Municipal Code. Again, we removed all fees. And we referred to state statutes. We made it much more simple. So you'll see that there's a lot of red strikeout. Um, and then we just did some general cleanup. Same process was, we reviewed Title VI, made our changes and recommendations. We provided it to the town attorney. And the town attorney has finalized it for you. You have both the red line version and the clean version for your review. A couple of things, um, just to review, we did remove some language with regards related to livestock. So the planning director is very relieved. They no longer has to permit livestock grazing. We, we also removed a section with regards to specific of birds because it didn't, didn't relevant. Uh, and we also removed another section. So, uh, what we did was we are now referring to the El Paso County Pet Animal Control Dog Licensing Rules and Regulations. That's where anyone living in the town of Monument, you would go to El Paso County to have your dog licensed. Um, and then we did, this is something that I wanted, again, as a policy decision is what is currently, portion of this is currently exists in your town code. So we added the word declare. So a dangerous dog, um, if an, if a dog were to there are certain hurdles that, that society uses along with El Paso County. And so it's, if there, if there is an incident where a dog attacks a person or a dog attacks another dog, that dog can be impounded, impounded by animal control. And then a hearing happens and it's, and if the hearing officer determines that that dog is dangerous, it becomes a declared dangerous dog. With that come restrictions. So normally restrictions like with, that come with a declared dog or declared dangerous dog is you have to have a six foot fence. Has to be walked by a competent adult. It has to be on a six foot leash. Um, there's a special declared, uh, dangerous dog. Um, dog license. It's a much higher fee. Um, normally, and I don't know, but there should be inspections that occur um, on an unannounced basis from animal control to make sure that, that the gate is locked, that the fence is right, the dog hasn't dug a hole under the fence, those kinds of things. Because the idea is if someone wants to, if there is an incident and someone wants to continue to have their dog, they want to be a responsible pet owner, these restrictions then allow that pet owner to have that dog, but also keep the community safe. That's the balance. Um, so in your current code, in the current code, it is unlawful to possess a declared dangerous dog within the town limits. So that is existing. Um, we also added it is unlawful to early release an impounded dangerous dog. So what that means is if for some reason my dog was, was involved in an incident and that dog, my dog was impounded, I could then petition and say, you know what, it's, I'd really like to have him released to me until the declaration happens. Because it usually takes a couple of weeks for that process to happen. And the county can decide or the humane society can decide, okay, this is a competent adult and they'll keep the dog safe and they have a fence and, right, they'll walk it with a muzzle or whatever restrictions are placed on it. That would not be possible in Monument. So you could not have an early release of a dog that's going through the process of potentially being declared dangerous. Uh, we removed some additional sections. Um, we're adopting the El Paso County Rules and Regulations.
Question.
Yes.
Back to, back to the dog thing.
Yes.
Is there any restriction by breed?
There are no breed restrictions.
Thank you.
That is, that is a very challenging. I only happen to know because I was a director, I was of one of the largest animal shelters in the United States. So I did declare, I did the hearings and I declared vicious or potentially dangerous dogs. So that's the only reason I'm um, a little bit more knowledgeable than one would normally be. Um, but no, breed restrictions are very challenging. It's yeah. But there is no breed restriction.
Insurance companies get away with it.
They, yes, they can, um, and they do. The challenge really is what is, there's so many mixed breeds and there's so many, are you getting a DNA test to prove that? What is that? Is that a pit bull? Is that a mix? Is that a, that's the challenge with breed restrictions. It's, it's very hard to determine. So again, we adopted the El Paso County Rules and Regulations. I can tell you from the perspective of being a multi-service animal shelter, animal control, it's much easier for the humane society to implement the same rules rather than having little changes for Monument and little changes for this community. This is very helpful to them because then it's, it's very clear. They know what their, what rules they're, um, holding the community and the animals accountable to. Um, and then the other policy recommendation that we're making is you currently have, um, a, a dog limitation of six. And really best practice a normal standard, especially as homes are being built closer and closer together, we are recommending four. However, we also put in a grandfather clause. So anyone who does have six would have the opportunity through the dog licensing process to um, allow those additional dogs to stay until whatever time their numbers are reduced. So no one would have to get rid of a dog. We would never want that. But we think at four is a more reasonable number as we get tighter as a community. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. The town attorney is here as well. Um, but we are recommending repealing and adopting the Title VI Monument Municipal Code.
Okay. When looking at the re adopted, there's a lot of sections reserved. Uh, why not just remove them? Are we planning on bringing them back one day? Can't we?
There, there are sections that were removed.
No, there's no, okay. I just was wondering why, what, what the, what was behind it?
Well, the, the following, the following codes that are existing that right remain, then they stay in order and that's right.
Yeah.
So if you wanted to go back historically. Sections. Or change.
Okay. Questions, comments from council?
Um, two. One, I just in section six point oh eight point zero five zero prohibited pet animals. Uh, E, all crocodilians. I just, I, when I read that, I just kind of laughed.
Why do you have crocodile?
No. Yeah, not, not right now. But on, on a serious note, um, and I'm not sure if it's in another section or I just, I had, I didn't read it about especially dogs or just pets being leashed when out in the community.
So that would be the leash law for, with El Paso County. So everything that El Paso County has, pick up your poop, walk your dog on a leash, all of that, we're incorporating in the El Paso County, um, rules and regulations. We're adopting those.
Okay. Doesn't sound like there's any more. This is another public hearing item. We will move on to the public. If there's anybody here who would like to speak for or against this ordinance. Please make your way up since the mic is not wireless. Not wireless. She needs to get up and walk around.
Um, Perry Hayes, um, resident, not Tri Lakes Chamber person. Um, I have a question on the limitation of the dogs and I will admit Jennifer did not read it. But because Monument does have properties that are larger in size and there are a lot of people that foster dogs. So I don't know if this four limit is including fosters or because fosters are temporary. I just think it's gonna, we're gonna lose some people that are taking care of some very much needed dogs until they can find their permanent homes. And four is not very many, especially if they're sitting on a couple of acres and they are able to take care of them. So just a thought.
Thank you.
So that's excluded. Breeders, fosters, temporary, um, housing situations, kennels, things like that are excluded from that. So those would be four permanent resident dogs.
Thank you. Uh, anybody online, Will?
Here.
Okay, um, any other comments in town hall? No, okay, we'll close public hearing, bring it back to council for further discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion if there's no discussion. To approve ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-five and ordinance repealing and re-adopting Title VI of the Monument Municipal Code.
Second.
We have a motion and second. That was fast. Motion is adopted, seven to zero. Oh, oh. Seeing it. Oh, it passed, right? Seven, went right, it went right by me. All right.
Since it popped up seven to zero, but still.
Okay, ordinance fourteen twenty twenty-five and ordinance proven real property transfer from El Paso County entering into an IGA with uh, accepting obligations related there to, there to, here to, where to, where to?
Where else?
Dan on the lighter.
Once again, good evening. And present. Okay, so, um, in your packet, um, we've, we have a, um, a request for a land transfer to accommodate the, uh, re, uh, the, uh, realignment of Old Denver Road is part of the Conexus development. This land transfer is between, uh, the county and, uh, the town of Monument. Uh, just a brief background, uh, Conexus was approved by resolution, um, uh, for preliminary and final plum, plan unit development. The approval included a range of land uses, that's not what we're talking about tonight, but I think it's important to note. It also included the realignment of Old Denver Road, uh, through the Conexus development, uh, by no easy task of, uh, but fortunately, we had a great developer who was willing to come to the table and work with the community to address the issues and relocate the road. But with relocating the road came some complexities, and that was making some changes to the Santa Fe Trail to main, to make sure that the trail remains a safe place, uh, for those who are using it, um, and without, I'm creating a conflict with the traffic that will now be using that re, uh, realigned road. So, um, the image that I have in front of you now, um, shows the Santa Fe Trail running along the east side of, uh, Old Denver Road. The, uh, the new, uh, the new, uh, road, the old, old Denver Road, uh, is going to be called, and I can't see it, Crossfield Road.
Cross what?
Crossfield Road. Okay, oops.
Really don't like that.
Just showed you my secrets. There we go.
I don't like that name.
So, um, so, uh, old, uh, the Santa Fe Trail's not changing, uh, it's still gonna be located along the east side of that road. But as it's, um, as, uh, the new Old Denver Road, uh, is realigned, we have to make sure that we have crosswalks that are perpendicular to the road, uh, so that way, just for safety, uh, safety concerns, uh, making sure that people can, are seen as they're crossing, um, or running, or try, riding their bikes across, uh, Old Denver Road now, at both the north and the south end, uh, the, we want to make sure that, uh, we create that space, um, that isn't necessarily in the right of way today for the, um, for Santa Fe Trail, um, so we can provide those crosswalks. The, uh, the complexity, um, is that the, the old Santa Fe, or the new Santa Fe Trail, the old and new always confuse me, uh, was developed in nineteen eighty-three with federal land and water conservation funds, a condition upon the property being maintained and accessible for public recreation uses. Uh, the old Denver realignment, then, uh, is going to cross that area of, on twice, and to make sure that we, uh, that the, that public use of that trail is maintained, uh, we want to, um, we want to make sure that, uh, the associated government entity, uh, who's responsible for that is still, um, has, has agreements and, and conditions, uh, set for those areas. Originally, Conexus was going to be the one, that was going to act as a, as a, uh, mediator or middle, a middle entity to help with that transfer. And, uh, through Bob, Bob's office, our town attorney's office, uh, we, we realized, and working with the county attorney, that it was unnecessary, unnecessary step, and it actually created more confusion in the process. So we in turn then began working, uh, I shouldn't say we, I did not talk to their attorney. Bob's office talked to, directly with their, their attorney, and established the IGA that's before you tonight, in our governmental agreement that allowed for that transfer of property, which also allowed for the transfer responsibility for that land. Uh, the images that are here before you, um, up on the screen, and are included in your packet show the triangle that has to be created, um, that would accommodate that cross, that crosswalk for the trail. Uh, the trail itself, um, on each end, uh, the, each end of that tra, um, triangle has ki, has actually concrete rather than gravel. Uh, that's required, just to make sure that the gravel doesn't wash into the pub, into the streets. And also may, helps me, um, with the maintenance of the, of the, of the trail as it's getting close to a road. Uh, so, uh, Conexus has agreed to do that installation and put it in for, for that requirement. Um, and then, um, and then we will have ownership and responsibility to make sure that that area is always used for public use. Now, when I say we, we have an arrangement through our, with our agreement with, uh, Tribe Metro District. Uh, there, the arrangement with them is they maintain our roads within the district, and they maintain, uh, those improvements that are in that intersection. So that'll be a kind of separate conversation that we'll be bringing forth with Tribe U, to make sure that they understand where we cross and they, and what they maintain. But today, we just want to make sure that we can, uh, get them approve this, so that way Conexus can start to work on the road, uh, start working with, uh, these crosswalks, and making this, and maintain this as a safe public use. Um, I've already kind of, I've already talked a little bit about the deed to transfer being from, uh, counties to Conexus, then the town. Through our efforts, we're making sure that it just goes from county to town. Um, we're entering into an IGA to establish that we are responsible for making sure that the, that your use restriction is, is kept in place. And it, um, and that, that confirm, that, uh, this process has been confirmed in writing, uh, through the county, uh, with the state of Colorado, the United States Department of Interior and National Park Service. On the twenty-fourth, uh, the county approved the same resolution that we're, um, approved the resolution for this IGA. So they're already on board, they've already stepped up to, to, uh, make sure this occurs, and we're now following suit, um, asking you to approve the ordinance tonight to, to accept this IGA. I think I was just too efficient, I already talked about this, so I won't bring it up any further. But the exhibits that are included with, uh, ordinance number fourteen twenty twenty-five, uh, contain, um, an exhibit or special warranty deed for the crossing parcels, uh, that has already been, um, executed by the El Paso County. And now I, um, acknowledged, uh, they were signed on six twenty-five. Again, acknowledgement letter from the state dated, uh, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. And Exhibit C is the actual intergovernmental agreement, uh, regarding compliance and stewardship of certain parts of the new Santa Fe Trail. Um, and before I, uh, pass it back to you, I just wanted to, to just publicly thank, uh, Eric Sheckel and, uh, he, uh, and Tom Blunk for the work, the outstanding work they've done. They've taken a very proactive approach with this process. Um, we're already working with them to make sure that the, those crosswalks are gonna be safe, that the folks who are using the trailer, um, are notified. If, I don't know why I'm shaking right now. This is so.
Um, too much mooshu?
It's just very, I need a tissue. Uh, yeah, it could be mooshu. The, uh, but I just wanted to thank you, um, thank you, um, and, and the Tom for, I'm sorry, Brock, uh, for, uh, the work and efforts that you put into this. Uh, this hasn't been easy, it's complicated, um, and I know, um, I appreciate it, and I would assume that they do as well, so. With that, I'm requesting the action that, a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen twenty twenty-five, and ordinance approving a real property transfer from El Paso County and entering into an intergovernmental agreement, accepting obligations related there too.
Okay, uh, thank you, um, since I didn't realize you were representing Brock.
Yes.
Is there still time to change the name of that street? Come on, something, something, uh, that's, you know, no, something that reflects the, the, um, the area, the town, the region. Who's Crossfield?
Eric Sheckel with Chuck Chapman, I work for Brock Chapman. We did not name that road. I don't know where that name came from, I think it came from the town, actually. So if you want to make it something different.
They're all gone.
Maybe it came from the county, because the county names all the roads.
The county?
So, they, they need to approve, there's a, there's a system that you have to go through to get them approved by the county.
There's all in favor for changing the name.
All, all those beer streets got approved.
Yeah, we have streets named after public beers.
More attractive. If you want to, it's, we don't have it on any of our documents, I mean, it's on our exhibits and things, presentation graphics, but we have no problem changing that name.
Okay, cool. Dan, can you find out how we can change the name?
You don't think, we always thought Crossfield, because it kind of goes across.
The, the other one, the new Old Denver would be better as Crossfield.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so.
I feel like we should be able to keep Old Denver, Old Denver, and then New Rose gets a new name.
Yeah.
It gets complicated.
We'd have to invent a plat for that.
Yeah, don't do that.
And with final P U D.
So, this is a public hearing item, um.
I got a question.
Yeah, questions.
I got a question for Dan. Okay, this is a bigger picture and a smaller picture. So the bigger picture is that we've got, we really have a disconnected piece of Tribe Metro District here, which is odd in itself. But now we've got overlap on this road and on this crossing, and I, I mean, I'm looking at this map and I'm thinking snowplows, right? So, so snowplows come up here, and where do they begin, and where do they stop, and then they send one over from Tribe U to do the rest of this road. None of this, and the bigger picture makes no sense, but somehow we got to figure out this trail crossing aspect of it, because that's the thing that's going to require ongoing maintenance and, and it, it's, Conexus is part of Tribe U. So we may have to make sure that we have this figured out somehow. And, and that's why I'm saying it, I'm not gonna stop it because of this, but, but we do need to figure out this maintenance stuff, or this disconnected island from Tribe Metro District that I can't imagine them wanting to send snowplows over to do this.
So, uh, all good points, Mer Protem King, the, um, we are going to have to sit down with them and, and, uh, come to a term or an agreement. Anytime we have to, um, plow, um, through other jurisdictions and, um, or other, uh, other parties that are responsible, we don't, we don't like to drop our plow and pick it up, and drop it and pick it up. Uh, so we're, we're gonna need to work with them on that anyway. I've already had, started having that conversation with Public Works and what they would like to do. But I think this is a, an excellent opportunity to sit down with Tribe U, and make sure that as we're crossing paths, um, and, and taking care of this area and maintaining the trail, that we're doing it in an orderly fashion. They're on this side, um, quite a bit, because they're also gonna be taking care of the Santa Fe Park or the Tarasau-Baja area. So, um, they are on this side already, um, but they, again, don't want to have to lift and drop and lift and drop their, their plows. So we're, we're gonna have to coordinate that. I also want to make sure that we establish, um, through our conversations with Tribe U, our expectations, uh, for make, maintaining this crosswalk, um, and have them understand our obligation to oversee and make sure it's done. We just happen to have a contract with another organization to do it for us. So I think as managing that contract and, and our relationship with Tribe U, we'll, we'll have to sit down and work on the terms. And, and we don't leave the developer in alert, so to speak, so, but thank you for bringing that up.
If, if it helps, um, Tribe U does plow for slates. Um, so they're, like, like Dan said, they're over, they're over here, um, already, and then as Conexus continues to develop, they're, they're gonna, gonna be an area that they're gonna.
Right, but you can see how this map is. And this is a mile and a half almost from Baptist.
And, and I think where, where Dan is, is heading is, in the interim, you just have Monument, you have an agreement that Monument plows it, that mile and a half, uh, for the time being, and then as you get more and more roads, then it, it might either keep the agreement or so, but yes, yeah, I, I, I think this is an opportunity to work more closely with Tribe U.
Okay. Yeah, uh, just unclear, we, the town is gonna own the crosswalks, right? The trail itself, the, it's still gonna be maintained, but.
If the outside of that triangle stays, still owned, um, by, it's in public right of way, um, that the county does maintain the trail. If I remember correctly, Cassie, we, we mow and keep it, uh, keep the outsides, but the, but the county takes care of the trail itself. Um, and again, that, that's the, we're, we're accepting just that section and that triangle to make sure, and, and good news again is it's being made, uh, it's more durable, it's kind, it's concrete and, and, and so on. But we'll, yeah, we'll be responsible, uh, for taking care of that. That's the cost of, um, being some of the, doing what we did with, uh, with the developer to relocate, realign, I should say.
We got a trail crossing now, El Commerce Center, so.
Right, right.
And we're gonna have two more actually down at Santa Fe Park, um, but those will be perpendicular, so they didn't require get the same, any, any of the manipulation that we had to do for this one. In and out of that, uh, the Conexus development.
Thank you. Okay, uh, before we open the public hearing, uh, just a question for staff. I've got a place assigned for our resolution and a unmarked place I sign, uh, under, uh, Bearwoman Carrie Geithner's signature for the IGA, or it's got my name, but there was no mark on it.
Hold on, let me look at it.
Uh, because their, their seal is there, and it's their clerk attested. Anyway, we'll open it up to public hearing. Um, is there anybody here that would like to speak for or against this item? On up, snuck in.
Good evening, Haley Chapin, resident, um, in the area, in the vicinity that is being proposed. Just a quick question, I don't know if it mentioned, is it a full aroundabout, or is it a three-way stop?
Three-way stop. Or actually, it's a, yeah, it's, it's gonna be a three-way stop.
Okay, so there's a stop sign. The only reason I ask is because there's a hill right there as you come up, and I'm like, that's a perfect spot for opportunity to collide, and so the fact that there's a stop would make it a lot safer. So, safety was my concern. Thank you.
Anybody online, Will?
Nobody online, Mayor.
Okay, any other questions or any comments for or against? I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion. Motion.
Those way stops meet the line of sight criteria? It's, okay.
And again, we're, we're gonna be monitoring and working with them as they're moving forward. We want it to be safe, they want it to be safe, uh, liability-wise. They certainly don't want to create a dangerous, uh, area. And again, we're obligated to make sure that it's still be used for the public good, so.
So, I'm not a thrilled that, that people that have lived on Old Denver Road have to deal with a new name now. But the name sucks, so if they could do something about that, that would be really great. Thank you.
I asked Dan if he could investigate changing.
Didn't hear you. I'm fading fast, so.
It's already plotted.
Quinn said it right in the first place. No, that's good.
That's a great name.
Where did you get that? That's beautiful name.
Let me, let me see where the name came from, because maybe there's a historic figure that we don't know about. Otherwise, let's come up with something that we'll see if there, we have the opportunity to come up with something that makes sense, that's meaningful to the community, and I can bring it back to you.
And ask citizens.
Yeah. Yeah, no, yeah, it's not changing anyone's address.
Couple people, but they're outside the limits, I think.
Yeah. We'd like, we'd like it to have some relevance or meaning.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number one, four, two, zero, two, five. An ordinance approving a real property transfer from El Paso County and entering into an intergovernmental agreement. Accepting obligations related thereto.
Second.
Motion second.
I remember my history correctly, I think Bendin Hook was a very important Dutch explorer.
Eric will be thrilled.
Captain, Captain.
We've really stretched that one.
What?
We could call it underlined.
That motion passes, uh, seven to zero. We are going to take a ten-minute break as requested by some folks up here. For those of you that are coughing. Need to get a beverage, by all means, take ten. We'll be right back.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
All right, we're back in session here, um. Mr. Furito. Before we move on to, uh, our resolutions.
Yes, I will, I want to make a motion to reconsider ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty five. And ordinance repealing and re-adopting Title thirteen of the Monument Municipal Code to address. Section thirteen, zero, four, dot, one, twenty.
Oh, you found it. All right, so in section one, thank you, in section one, twenty. Oh yeah, we need to have a second.
Second.
We're reconsidering. There's a, is there's, there's a, what, what is it?
Yeah, ordinance twelve, twenty, twenty, twelve, twenty-five, uh, section thirteen, dot, zero, four, dot, one, twenty, emergency water, watering provisions. So, we have to do the motion.
Right. We have to do the motion first, so we have a, we have a motion and we have a second.
I did.
What are we voting?
We're, to reconsider the, or the original item, we'll, we'll explain to you what needs to be.
So we're just voting to reconsider.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you're, we are adding bucket trucks to this one. Oh, no, no, water slides?
Do we need to vote on it before we can see what's in it?
Yes, no, so what, what page were you looking at?
Uh, it's going to be page.
One oh six.
At the bottom. Yeah.
Page three?
One oh six of the packet.
Thank you, one oh six.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so. There is emergency watering provisions and the way it is worded, as it brought to my attention from a resident. That the restrictions that Monument would place on, uh, these emergencies would be all encompassing. Which would mean that Tribeview and Woodmore Water would be subject to this ordinance. So we just need to have the language modified to remove the other water utility providers from this ordinance.
So Mayor, what I would suggest is, uh, adding in that, uh, section thirteen, oh, four, one, twenty, A. Emergency watering restrictions and then add the words applicable to users of the town waterworks. And, um, if, if that is what, uh, you agree is appropriate, then I motion to, uh, approve the ordinance. With modifications previously approved in that addition would be the appropriate procedural way to accomplish that.
So wouldn't, wouldn't this only apply to, 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 uh. The wa, the water enterprise for Monument, because otherwise everything in here is going to conflict, is.
Well, there isn't, uh. The, the other, uh, provisions really point to the town system, but this section thirteen, oh, four, one, twenty. Doesn't actually point to the town's system, okay?
So I'm tracking thirteen, oh, four, one, twenty, thirteen, oh, four, one, thirty, which is planned. I need to re, restate or just previous, previously stated, okay? Are we, we good? Okay, I make a motion to. Adopt ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty-five and ordinance repealing and re-adopting Title thirteen of the Monument Municipal Book, Municipal Code. With previously stated. Addendums and adding thirteen, dot, zero, four, dot, one, twenty, alpha to include. Town water system.
Second, I think.
What was, the question was, do we have to open this up to a public hearing?
Yeah, do we have to open this back up to the public?
Oh, good.
Okay, so before we vote, we. Yeah, before we vote, so. Sorry, ladies and gentlemen, but we're going to reopen this to a public hearing on the modification to, uh, change the language. In, in the ordinance to reflect that this only impacts the town's water systems if there's any type of emergency. Restrictions. Anybody here would like to speak for or against those? Will, online?
No hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, so I'll bring it back and we'll close the public hearing and we do have a motion that was made for with a second. We're ready to vote on.
Give me those again. You initiated.
Marco initiated, Laura seconded.
Okay, and that motion passes seven to zero. Thank you everybody for your patience on that. Um, we'll move on quickly to resolution forty-four, twenty twenty-five, resolution to appoint. Member to the Planning Commission. Dan, you're up again.
Mr. John Parr has applied for and is being recommended, um, as our newest member of the Plan Commission. Um, it's, uh, filling a space that, uh, Councilor Smith has left behind, uh, sadly. Uh, but, uh, Mr. Parr, uh, he was at our last, at your last council meeting, um, is a, a rest, a town resident. Uh, he's, uh, experienced in, uh, construction management, I believe for healthcare. Uh, his resume and other information were included in the packet. I also see that we've, uh, just inserted him into the, uh, uh, the term, uh, the. Uh, the term, uh, schedule so that we always have a good turnover of Plan Commission, um, as needed. Uh, we have two vacancies left, uh, for two alternate members, um, and, uh, we continue to accept. Uh, and call for, uh, people to apply for those positions. I'm also getting, um, a few requests now for students who are interested in, uh, participating and being on there, so we'll have to. Uh, work with you to see how we can make that, uh, more official and part of our programming. So I'm, I'm hoping, uh, or asking for you to approve this resolution, uh, appointing, uh, Mr. Parr as our newest Plan Commission member.
Okay, um. Is there any comments or questions related to the applicant from the council?
He's not, he, I mean, he came to the last meeting because we had originally had him scheduled for the last meeting. Um, I know he came to me, um, uh. At the farmer's market and asked, when can he start? So.
Oh, I tried.
He's ready to go, yeah, he's ready to go.
I read, I read his resume, I mean, it seems qualified. If you are happy with the interview, since we won't have an interview here. That's, uh, what's important.
I'll make sure he looks for you afterwards and talks to you a lot. I, yeah, I, I'm confident that he's going to be a good fit with the group.
I'll make a motion to, uh, adopt resolution forty-four dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution appointing. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution forty four dash twenty twenty five, a resolution appointing a member to the planning commission.
I'll second.
Motion a second.
Thank you.
The motion passes seven to zero. For those listening, we have two openings for alternates on the planning commission. If you are interested in what this town is doing from a planning perspective, please join the planning commission. We don't take suggestions off of social media. Okay, up next, resolution forty five twenty twenty five, a resolution to approve a change order to C X T for Monument Lake bathrooms. Finally, Cassie gets to that waiting to talk about changing tables for a week now.
Good evening, Council, and I just want to say welcome to our new council member. You don't, you might not know me. I'm Cassie Olgren with the Parks Department. And because this, it's been a while since we spoke about this. I'll just refresh your memory a little bit. In twenty twenty three, we were awarded a grant from CPW Colorado Parks and Wildlife, specifically the Fishing is Fun Grant to put restrooms at the lake. And that was after, I think, maybe five applications that we had submitted. So it was good news. And then in February, the council approved a contract with C X T for that restroom facility. It's a prefab prefabricated restroom facility. And the amount that you approved the contract for was a hundred and thirty three thousand and five twenty nine dollars. And the one thing that is missing from that contract, when you kind of think about like the not to exceed is the delivery charges because they don't really have, they don't have control over those conditions. You know, these, this company usually installs in national parks and places that are kind of out in the boon docks. And so they, they will guarantee your price and they'll stick to that price, except that sometimes things come up when it comes to delivery, which is what happened with us. We have a switchback on our road going down to the lake that required them to transfer it from a larger crane truck to a smaller trailer and then follow it with that crane. And so that just added a few thousand dollars. We had plenty in our contingency fund and we're actually well below what we had budgeted anyway. So we're in great shape, but it was just over that line of needing to come to you to approve that change order. So that's why I'm here today.
Okay, so we're, we're not, this is already pre-approved for the baby changing tables and the.
I made sure both of them had babies.
Yeah, but those are things that you, the thing here that's changed is the, the delivery fee.
Right, right.
The original.
They added, if you want to know exactly, they had to adjust. The installation surcharge was seventy eight hundred and then they added the short trailer cost of thirty eight hundred. And so overall, it was just, just over. I think that the, I think it was six thousand, maybe that was that it increased, which was just over that amount for us to even bother you with it, but here I am.
This is not a public hearing. So questions, comments for Cassie about the resolution. I was going to come up with something silly, but I'll just leave it at that. This, this land has already started carving out, right? The, they've already started carving out the spot where it's going to go.
The site has been prepped, yeah, by town staff and the contractors bringing in the utilities, the sanitation and the electric and the plumbing are all going in the next couple of weeks. And I will definitely be letting you know when we're having a ribbon cutting ceremony.
Toilet ribbon cutting?
It's going to be a big day for me.
Make sure the P is there for that.
I get one thing accomplished in this.
The reason why I bring it up because of PPACG, I think it was last month, everybody brought up their, their restrooms that were being opened. And I felt sort of left out, but I, I, Wednesday, I'll be able to let them know.
Yeah.
Ours is.
And no more, no more portalits at the lake. That's, that's the exciting thing.
So refresh my memory on the, on the grant. How much of grant did we get on this?
So it's a seventy five percent match with us paying twenty five percent and they approved a hundred and seventeen thousand. And originally, we were going to have to pay. So, so their, their grant was for one seventeen and that's seventy five percent of what they were willing to pay for the, for the project. But the project was expected to be two thirty, two hundred and thirty thousand. So what we were paying was anything above and beyond that one seventeen. But right now, we're actually projected to only spend one forty two. So our out of pocket, you know, of our twenty five percent and above and beyond is only twenty four thousand.
So that's nice because I'm still always amazed at government, well, it's not really government, but people who sell things to the government, it's like, it's like getting married, right? You say, oh, I'm getting married and they go, oh, the price just went up double, right? It's kind of the same way with, with government stuff. So I'm glad we got that grant, but I'm still amazed at the price of these things.
Well, it actually explains a little bit of why, why this change order has to happen because I had made the order just before the turn of the year into twenty twenty five because prices were going to go up. But it was too early for me to kind of work out the delivery, but I wanted to make sure I locked in the price for the restrooms of twenty twenty four prices.
Sure. Okay, well, thanks for explaining all that.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, motion.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion approving resolution number forty five dash twenty twenty five, a res- a resolution to approve a change order to C X T for the Monument Lake bathrooms.
Second that. We have a motion in a second to approve the bathrooms. I know. And that motion passes seven to zero. All right, next up, resolution forty six twenty twenty five, a resolution for an addendum, number one, agreement with J D S Hydro. Mr. Tarnish.
Getting anything council once again. Resolution in front of you tonight is to approve an addendum to the original consulting services agreement with J D S Hydro, which has actually been bought by Respect, which is a bigger firm out of South Dakota. So they always still mention both names just because they're more known as J D S Hydro. We originally had a contract with them back in twenty twenty to design and construct the new water storage tank on Monument Hill. And during that process is when we discovered that the lot lines up there and the property boundaries were had been messed up for probably forty, fifty years. We've since spent quite a bit of money on service attorneys. And Mr. Cole's team has been working for quite a while, clearing all those things up. And we think we're really close based on the conversation I had with Doug, who works for Bob Cole. And we're at the point now where I'm, I'm trying to prepare all the engineering work that remains to be done. So the minute that we get to go ahead to move forward with that, we'll have a revised addendum basically to the engineering, being at the engineering. Everything has been, been on hold since twenty twenty one. So I asked the engineers to revise a couple of minor changes and to give us an updated price list because I know every year their, their basic hourly price list adjusts a little bit and I wanted to be ready to do that rather than have to bring this to you and then we wait, we have to wait a while before we can move forward. I'm kind of doing this in preparation for the go ahead, which we hope will be coming very soon. So the addendum right here. The fiscal impact for that is two hundred sixty nine thousand, seven hundred. And I was trying to find before the meeting what the original contract said, but I didn't, I couldn't find the exact number. But I can tell you this number is slightly higher than what we approved back in twenty twenty twenty. And as you can see, attached in your package should be a scope of services for addendum one, which is very similar to what was originally approved. The only difference that's not in this particular addendum is originally we had them design a booster station to go next to the tank and that was to support any future development at that elevation, anywhere along those lines. Because if you're at the, at the top of Monument Hill and you have a water tank for pressure, all you're going to have is the height of the water in the tank. So if anything developed to the north or south, probably halfway down the hill, there's not enough pressure to support water service. So we had them design it and it was ready to go to bed and then everything kind of stopped because we ran into the property issues. So once those are resolved, the booster station is not part of this right now, but it is ready to go if the council in the future decided to annex with the purpose of supplying anybody in that area, then we would need that booster station to develop that, that pressure needed. But this right here is just really revising their, their current, their current structures for their cost. And there's also been a question about whether we, the original contract for the tank was design a one point two million gallon tank. And that was based upon the expected load on the system. At the same time, we were starting the process to build the tank out west. Now, the tank out west has been supplying the town for probably a year and a half now. It is taking the majority of the load. We did some modifications to the system several months ago that allowed us to let more water out of the Monument Hill tank to help keep the water moving because stagnant water causes water quality problems over time. Aging of water is a big problem in the industry. So again, what we're trying to do here is we talked to the engineers about let's at least get a, a design for a one point five or up to a two million gallon tank. And that's based on expected demand or development in the future. And if it turns out that we don't need that much, then we should, we'll be in a position to basically shrink the size of that tank and could save some money in the long run. But we want to be prepared that if the, if the demand is going to show that we need a little bigger than one point two million, we'll at least be moving down that design path to do that. And this is all going to start once we get to go ahead. The first thing that will happen is we're going to have to remove an old shed that's been there because a new tank is going to go right where that shed is and we need to get some geotech samples. And right now we can't because the rig won't fit inside that shed. And of course, we can't be on that property until, till the legalities are resolved. So if you look on the, the scope, this addendum, there's seven tasks identified, which is what we asked them to submit a proposed fee for. And there is a not to exceed statement in here. Again, because this is an engineering agreement, they're a little easier to, to fit that in and and I guess I'll take any questions you have concerning this addendum.
I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions on this. So since we've had several years of delays, where are we with the land use issues that we have spent probably three years on?
The latest I heard is they're waiting for the county to finish their planning process. We had to go to the county to get certain subdivision exemption plaits and there may be some other processes that had to be finalized through the county.
Yes, I guess I wonder why we're going through this when there's still potential for more delays.
Well, my understanding is that delays are coming to a close and maybe, I don't know, Mr. Cole wants to add anything. We've been told by the county that they should be approving the subdivision exemption plat soon, anytime now. We believe that we've resolved all the issues and questions they've asked and gotten them the last information they need. And they said it shouldn't take long. As soon as they approve that plat, which is administrative approval, so it doesn't have to wait for meetings, then we hope to close the transactions within thirty days, so.
Any other actions the council has to take as it pertains to this? Is there?
Not for that real estate transaction.
We've already gone through all those?
Yes, you, you have approved that transaction.
Okay, so let's say sixty days or worse, worst case. If we approve this tonight, how quickly, I mean, you've got some, some things in here, like you need soil evaluation to begin and that's, that's got a timeline behind it for.
Yes, every, everything is kind of on a, I guess the best way to describe it is a domino type effect. We need to clear the old shed off the property first. Then we get the geotech people in, we get the soil samples. The data from that will be soon, will be used for the design basis report, which I have to go to the state for approval and that's to approve the, the foundation for the tank where it's going to sit. So in the meantime, there'll be other things in motion as far as designing the connections to the tank and the vault that'll house the meters, things along those lines. But we really can't do anything until we get that final clearance from, from the attorneys that were clear.
Is, is there, is there a chance that this, because forgive me, Tom, but when we do, we do these tank things, we've seen cost overruns and that have been extraordinarily expensive. And every time we get delayed, it, it appears we find something new to, to cost the town money. So we see two sixty nine, seven hundred thousand here. That's, that doesn't even include the tank, right?
No, this is just the design and engineering. Once it gets bid out and a tank contractor gets selected through our normal process or bidding process, then we'll come back to you with a construction contract for that.
Okay, now you're looking at going from one point two million to somewhere between one point five and two million. As I'm looking at the aerial of the tank location, everything to the, to the west of that tank and anything potentially to the north until we're told otherwise. I mean, there is the potential that we could pick up well, customers that are currently on wells.
Yes.
And quite possibly, it's probable versus possible because they may not want to, as homeowners, be spending twenty five, thirty thousand dollars on a system that, that would have potential to have to be replaced every X amount of years, right? So why are we, why would we be, why don't we just do the two million and get the price locked in? And the design done for it so that we can offer those services sooner?
We could, we can definitely do that.
But if it goes down to one point two, there's a reason why he wants to jump up to two.
Yeah, well, we've got two million gallons already and the Red Rocks tank is two million, right?
Yes.
So we have two million gallons there. This was one million.
Right.
That serviced the whole town. So now we got two million servicing the whole town. And if this was at one point two million, that would service everything in, in.
Well, we, we originally, when we embarked on the project of trying to build a new tank out west and replace the existing tank, which is, you know, in serious decline.
Right.
Original plans were to build a two million gallon tank there. But after the engineers looked at it, they, they said, based on your current expected demand, that the tank out west would take on most of the load and the tank in Monument Hill, the demand for the water in there would drop. And so again, in the industry, one of the concerns you always have is water age. Water that gets warm and sits for a while, sometimes can form disinfection byproducts and other things. So you always want to keep the water in the tanks moving either up or down. And up, we can always do with the wells supplying it. Down is demand. There's no way to, to create more demand other than flushing a bunch of hydrants, which we do once a year. So we, we switched to a lower volume tank for that, but since, since that switch was made, Johnny and his crew over here have managed to dot, basically design. Johnny and his crew over here have managed to dot, basically design. By modifying some pressure reducing valves to let more water out of that tank. And allow us to take care of some of the issues that could come up. Though we don't, we don't have a need to keep it at one point two million gallons anymore. And then with the, the recent. Potential of supplying future customers that are currently on wells. It just adds to the, the demand that, that would be coming from that tank.
Cause even if all of Wakanda signed up tomorrow, you'd still have enough in that small.
We'd have to, we'd have to calculate, but yes, we, we have a. We have a water master plan that we're, you know, that's usually what helps determine. How many, how much more water you need out to your full build out. Well, lately it seems like the full build out is, is the high potential to change that number has gone up. The percent that the, I wouldn't say risk, but the amount of water you'll need for the future is, will, will change. Because if you're going to take in on an additional fifty customers that are currently on wells and you. Decide to annex Wakanda and develop a distribution system with them and supply them. You know, we'd have to calculate the demands because I don't know how many homes are in that area, but. Demand is, is going to be there. And by, if you want to go with two million gallons. That's just me making a phone call to the engineers and saying. We say one point five to two, but if we want to go with two, we'll just tell them to something else, make sure two M G D. I, I don't think there's a much of a difference other than the, the base and whether, how high we want to make the tank. They either have to widen the base or they have to, to raise the height, but that depends on where you're located at and what the geotech. Results tell us.
So this, so this seven tasks that they have in there where it's geotechnical in there, that includes the core drilling? Is that what that is?
That includes. The, all the preparation, design and engineering needed to get a bid set for construction. That would go out to bid.
What about the soils test? So is that?
That's one of the first steps that'll be done.
But that's part of this seven tasks? Is, he says geotechnical evaluation, is that? Is it getting a drill rig in there too and drilling?
They do, and I can't remember what it is, twenty or thirty feet that typically they'll drill down. That'll tell them where the bedrock level is. What kind of soils are down there and then they have to design the thickness of the, the footer, the, the floor. And because of the type of design of this tank, this tank will most likely have columns inside of it. So it's, a lot goes into the design and then again, that design has to go to the state. They can take anywhere from a month to two months to review it, to send it back. And if you, and you look under schedule, they're expecting that they'll be ready. With a final set of drawings to go to bid within a hundred and eighty days. Once they know the geotech soils evaluation.
So that, so this, this is, this tank is moving. Not far, so we have an existing tank up there right now. Is there any kind of structural issues from, from?
Oh, yes.
Ground movement?
Well, I, I don't want to say ground movement because I don't know, but that tank up there is, is about fifty years old.
Right.
It's been through several evaluations, several Band-Aids to keep it in, in a safe enough condition. That the state is very aware of it because every time we have our, our sanitary survey inspection, which is once every three years. We always get hit on it. And so they want to know what's the status of it and we always have to tell them, well, we're, we're waiting. For some legalities to clear up so that we can get the, the tank designed and move forward.
Right, but. I guess what I'm saying is they're going to move, if the tank gets moved fifty feet, the soil is probably not going to be much different.
So it, it could be, but I don't know what's all involved when they, what they're looking for when they drill.
Sure.
Down, I mean, I know that's what helps determine. The structure of the bottom of the tank, like how thick they have to make it, how much steel they might have to put in.
What, what's that, what's the amount of time it's going to take to clear the land for the, for the tank?
Clearing the land.
And who's doing the work? Is that contracted or is that?
We will, we will, we'll sub that out separately from this to try to save on cost.
We're going to see another cost.
But that'll be done by, by, we'll do that as staff, we'll subcontract that out ourselves so that it's not part of. The major cost.
Construction cost.
Yeah, I know, but we're, it's going to be contracted. It's going to be another. Part of the water project, right? I mean.
Well, part of the, the design, yes, they'll have to do, they'll have to level the site, things like that, but that'll be when we go to bid. That'll be part of the bid process, but like tearing down the shed and things like that, we're going to contract that out ourselves under the service. Services that we, we could get. Won't be part of this contract.
Well, no, not this one. I'm just saying, we're going to, what, what are we, what are we talking here in millions for the whole thing?
Uh, well, that's part of this process is we'll get an engineer's estimate based on the new size, what that's going to be. Right now, we're budgeted for three million. But I don't expect that, that's mostly construction cost. If you look at the number here at two sixty nine, that's, that's a little less than ten percent, which is. What I always look at is an average for design and engineering runs about ten percent of your total cost of the project. So we're, we're underneath that number. The. Once we get rolling on it with a hundred and eighty days, I fully expect that we won't bring a. A construction contract to you till most likely in January. Because it'll take them six months. By the time this gets going, it's already July. Probably, so we expect to go to bid so, so that we're ready to. Start construction in the spring, which would make sense from a, from a weather standpoint. It's tough to build tanks in the dead of winter, especially at that elevation. The ground freezes a lot deeper and. I'd rather not build a massive structure like that during the dead of winter.
Does this look like the existing, what, the new water tank or is this going to be? The like, the, like the one that we've got there now?
Um, I believe it's going to look similar. In size to the one out west, but internally it's going to look different.
That's fine. I just wanted to know aesthetically if it's going to be tall, skinny, but.
Well, I think we can, we can kind of guide that process based on the height of the trees there. Do we want to keep it hidden below the highest trees? That's definitely something the engineers can work out.
And then, and then how, I mean, I'm assuming that the, the water lines that are getting replaced up to that.
That's coming, that's coming next.
Right, they're going to be underneath Beacon Light.
Yes.
Correct? So there's a, there's a time issue with dealing with that before it gets.
Well. Yes, in a way, the next resolution you're going to look at has to do with the pipeline.
Right.
And because the county has shifted their focus from starting on county line to the starting way down on the low end and working their way up. It basically shifted the timing of when they would be near the tank. And when we would have to lower the lines.
So we, we, in other words, we can't. I guess what I'm saying is we couldn't necessarily kick the can down the road for the design because it's all, it's all tied together.
Yes, they are tied together and hopefully right now it looks like the timing. Should work out. But it depends if there's any delays with the county's project.
Yeah, they were supposed to go to design already.
They, they just went out to bid within the last probably week and a half.
They're going to get sticker shock too.
Yeah, well, I just, when we were in that last meeting with them. With C dot last month and they brought up their. They were ready to go to, to design then. That was a month ago. The next meeting's coming up, so they're. Okay, this is years in the making.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions for Tom? Any comments or questions on this resolution? Not a public hearing item, so. If there are none. We'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number forty six dash twenty twenty five. Resolution approving addendum to number one to the consulting services agreement with JDS Hydro Consultants, Inc. Respect Company dated twelve, seven, twenty twenty.
I'll second it. That motion passes seven to zero. All right, Tom, next forty seven, twenty twenty five?
Yes. Uh, next resolution in front of you is to approve an engineering agreement with Respect Engineering. To provide pipeline design for the Beacon Light Road Tank System. The two lines that we currently have in place apply the existing tank. And we've been told by the county and I, I've seen the drawings to verify this, that. They were going to lower Beacon Light Road fifteen to twenty feet, especially at the tank site area. Right line, right now our lines are sitting at about six feet. So they're going to have to be loads or lowered. So originally the project was thinking. We'll lower the sections that we need to low to help. Move the lines under the road just so that they stay within an easement. Uh, but as time went by and we started thinking about the age of those lines and looking at. Problems we've had in the past, it, it made a lot of sense that since those lines are forty to fifty years old. That if we're going to go through the process of digging up. And trying to lower things that. It makes better sense from a, from a money perspective to replace them. Because we're going to have to be excavated regardless. Uh, lines are already close to the end of their, their normal life. I think if we just win with the sections that need to be straightened out and lowered. That we could be back in there in, in another four to five years. Digging up sections that, that were just lowered, just because the age of lines. So. The process has changed to, it makes a lot of sense from both a, a money's perspective and. Trying to think of the right word here from a future perspective to replace them now. The opportunity is there, they're going to be excavated regardless. Uh, there are sections of this, of these lines that are supposed to move two hundred feet to the east. Because of the realignment of the road, the bottom section, that dirt section that has some S curves, two S curves back to back is going to go away. Curve sections are going to move to the east and realign with the, with the road. So that they don't have those curves anymore. And then the top of Monument Hill, because of site visibility issues, when you crest that hill, you can't see very far in front of you. That's the sections are going to be lowered fifteen to twenty feet. And so. Part of the idea of using respect is because they already had to design the tie-ins to the lines and install the. The connections that go to that. It made sense for them. They already have a lot of the insight on this. That we would just continue with them to design the pipeline. The problem we had was the county kept telling us, yeah, we're going to go to bid soon, we're going to go to bid soon. And they would never commit to a date, then all of a sudden we got a call and says, hey, it's going to go out to bid in a week. And so that's when we started talking to the engineers, how soon can you get us a design for the pipeline? Well, in the. In the scope of services here, I believe they put down thirty days. I'm not mistaken that. Find it here. Think somewhere in here, it talks about.
Thirty days.
Yeah, it talks about thirty days. And if this gets approved tonight, the first call we're going to make in the morning is. Have their engineer Mario De Pasquale contact Omar De County, who's the engineer for the road project. And have them coordinate. Now, since they already bid it out, what'll happen is if. The council approves this tonight, then this will most likely. Uh, once a design is done, it will go out to the same bidders as an addendum. So that the same contractor will hopefully not only build a road, be able to relocate the, the pipelines. But we don't know what this is going to cost till the design is done. And once the design is done, again, we'd have to come back to you to get the approval. Uh, for that, because so it's like an opportunity to replace forty, fifty year old lines. And we would have to, even if we didn't replace them, we'd have to lower them. And I don't really think there's going to be a lot of cost difference between, all you're really paying for is. Typing material, everything else would be expected on the line lowering anyway. So once we know that price, we'll come back with a construction contract for that. We're, we'll have to figure out how to do that because the county's already bidding it out. So kind of a weird category for us to be in, but we'll, we'll figure out what we need to bring to you. Uh, with the details.
Is the county willing to pay any of this?
Not for the water lines, because when they were put in, they were never put into any kind of an easement. Or anything. It almost looks like only records we have is some sketchy drawings from. Uh, nineteen seventies of when they were put in, maybe some elevation drawings that showed where the line.
Will there be easements created? Will there be easements created now?
Well, there are going to be easements with a new road. Yes, it'll be utility easements.
You, well, but you said how many feet, two hundred feet east?
Well, that lower section, I've been told is about two, will be located about two hundred feet to the east.
Is there, but there's no easement there. There'll have to be one created.
They'll be creating that to put the new road.
Okay. That's funny. I, I asked where will the new pipeline be located, two hundred feet?
So because, so because they're lowering the road and our lines are in there, they're, they're just claiming that there's no easement, so they're not going to help. With the cost.
That's what they initially told us, yes. I don't have anything in the base to try to force them to, to pay for this. I mean. Who knows what happened? The decisions were made forty, fifty years ago.
Right, but they're making new decisions now. And.
Yeah.
I mean, we have.
Well, one of the things that, that has recently been talked about, I know, talked to Madeline about this a little bit. Is if we're going to be in a position to supply future. Customers up there that are currently on wells. Then when we put these lines in, we need to tell the designer. At every property lot line, let's make sure we stub out. Uh, potential connection and get it out from under the road. So when the time comes and somebody wants to get to us, we don't have to cut up a new road.
So you, are you going to have them stubbed out under the road so that they're on the west side of Beacon Light? Will you be able to do that?
Well, I think we'll be able to stub out wherever the, the, because they're on large lots up there, most of their properties. We'll be able to stub out anywhere that maybe in the middle of, between this lot line and that line. And run it out from behind the curb, because this road will have curb and gutter. And, and put a curb slot valve and just put a marker and, and make sure it's on the drawings. And it just sit there until the day it's needed.
Okay, that's cool. Glad we, well.
It, it'll a little bit to the construction costs, but, but overall. It's much cheaper to do it now than to go back and have to, have to cut the road and have a bunch of patches.
Does anybody in Wakanda come to you and asked about water service?
Uh, I've had maybe three or four in the last couple of years. But most of the ones that are asking are. Quite a bit away from Beacon Light Road. And what I have to tell them is that the only way to get water service to you is to run five hundred feet of water line. And if we're just running, we wouldn't run a single three quarter inch line, five hundred feet, you, you'd lose a lot of pressure in that case. So. We have to tell them, we're just not, we're not prepared to do that. We just, it would be. It would be very expensive for them because that cost would be all on them. And then again, that would require annexation of some kind or. Individually, if you were to prove another at a service area connection, then they'd be paying one and a half times the rate. So timing, when they ask that is, is not great right now, but it, it could be in the future. That's kind of how I've looked at it. There's never really been anyone, there's a couple of houses close to the west side of Beacon Light. Further down on the pave section.
Right.
That could be an easy, but again, they're, they're in the county.
Right.
So the, the east side. Of Beacon Light all the way up to Sandy Smith's house, which is one of the houses right before you get off. Or get further up is our most northerly residential connection. And from there on, it's all county property and our lines just cut through it up the road. Sure.
All right, any other questions or comments for Tom on this? Okay, then I will look for a motion.
I'd like to motion to approve resolution number forty seven dash twenty twenty five, a resolution approving. Engineering services agreement with JDS Hydro Consultants Incorporated and a respect company to design two new pipelines. To the Monument Hill Tank.
I'll second that.
We have motion, a second. We have motion in a second. That motion passes seven to zero. Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you for all the. Presentation tonight, we are gonna move on to a discussion item. Oh, you're not going anywhere, Tom. Contract between the town of Monument Native Sun for. Iron removal eleven twelve, didn't we already go through this?
We, we did, we approved the uh, the funding for that project, but you wanted to see uh. The contract and we wanted to have a discussion about not the term not to exceed. And so I sent a memo in the packet that. I thought it kinda. Describe the three different types of uh, contracts or agreements that we typically deal with in, in public works. And uh, in the memo, I described the, the first one being um. Uh, when we look at capital equipment. Uh, to insert the language of not to exceed for a purchase of that kind is very easy because usually you know the final sales price. Uh, minus the taxes and we can come to you with a lot of confidence that. This price isn't gonna change because that's what the dealer is, it would make an offer on. Uh, the second type is an engineering agreement similar to what we just approved with uh, JDS Hydro. Again, those are normally based on uh, time and material. And uh, they have a defined scope, so it's, it's not too hard to. Put uh, that type of language into that type of agreement. Uh, the problem that we have with the, the contract. Or uh, native sun is a construction contract. And again, when that's bid out, there's usually a bid tab that we tell them how much of each quantity we need. And then they have a bid price per unit as that goes along. And then uh, lately, we've been adding a ten percent uh. A contingency into that, just because we've had experience where. Um, that seems like a reasonable number, so that we don't necessarily have to. Come back for, for minor changes. So, what I wanna, what I was trying to do here is explain. How when you're doing construction contracts, uh, the term not to exceed. Is, is a little more difficult to try to fit in because. When construction contracts began, uh, contractors are digging up the dirt, whether it's a pipeline or a tank or whatever the case. And sometimes unforeseen things are there that the engineers didn't. Yeah, we just don't know based on soil testing and all. And I've seen all kinds of, of minor issues that come up. And um, what we do have uh, policies and procedures in place. That if there was a major change and, and we, we define. Change orders and our current contract purchasing policy is anything greater than five percent of the original contract price. Or if you see it's twenty five thousand, we'll have to come back to the council for approval. That's kinda the way we, we would handle anything that would come up. Whenever go into these projects, we expecting things to come up. But the last several projects we've had, um. Three quarters of the way through the project, we have a glitch that came up, or we have something that. We need to come back to you with. And so uh, it makes it difficult if you, if you put a construction contract together and put not to exceed. And again, this is after having meetings with uh, Mr. Cole and our engineer Will Coger for this project. That if you, if you go with a not to exceed in a construction contract, there's, there's a high likelihood that. A lot of companies wouldn't bid it. And it's not that we don't want them to stick to the price, we do. But I just wanna assure you that we have, we have procedures in place to handle anything that would come beyond that. Uh, our fear is that if you put not to exceed in there, one, we may not get very few bidders, if any. And secondly, that um. We have uh, we have policies and procedures in places to handle anything that would come up. And uh, I asked Will Coger to come tonight just to give you um. An engineering perspective, cause he's done, you know, hundreds of these construction contracts with other towns and other agencies. And then, like I said, we had a conversation with Mr. Cole and I believe we're all in agreement. That um, we can, we can put certain language in there, but if you put not to exceed on a construction contract. There's a high chance that we may not, we may not get any bidders for it. It's just other types of agreements that makes a lot of sense. But construction, because as, when you're digging in the ground, we, you, you know. We do soil samples, we do potholing here and there to figure it out, but, but sometimes. Um, things come up that it's hard to build into a contract. And um, if, if a contractor was to bid and not to exceed construction contract, my guess is their price would go way up. So in the end, it's almost like we'd be paying a lot more if they're the winning bid than. If we were to take our chances with what the engineers designed and what's expected. And then be prepared um, to discuss any contract issues that come up.
Well, I have um. Some basic questions about this, let's just, you know, put all the cards on the table, there, there are various types of contracts. Yes, we have policies, however, our policies and procedures in the past. Have been woefully inadequate when it comes to um, unforeseen issues. And we've ended up paying handsomely for those unforeseen issues, and we're the ones paying. We're the ones that have been put on the hook now. Um, a not to exceed, a fixed price, a cost plus, those are types of contracts as well. That you can put in place so that there's some shared risk, shared reward if. Things don't go the way that they should. We shouldn't always be eating the cost, is kinda what, what, where I'm coming from. Which is the reason that I brought up the not to exceed. You know, it, it's always like, you know, we've got the big fat checkbook, not anymore. We don't have the big fat checkbook, so we've gotta be very diligent about how we spend the money and how we negotiate contracts. I mean, I have a difficult time buying, somebody's not gonna, the, the people aren't gonna bid, somebody's gonna bid. And somebody's gonna get the contract. That's kinda the way it is, but. I'm really, really reluctant anymore to be, I sat here, you, you've been here. And I've sat here watching this and go down the tube, down the tube, down the tube. With, it seems like uh, the Alice in Wonderland hole that we step in every time. And we're the gotcha guys. That, that's kinda where I'm coming from with this, that's, that's why I.
Well, here's what, here's what I will say, cause this is my background. I get the spot that you're in and I also. So there's, there's a couple different ways of bidding projects, right? Some people bid low to get the job and then ding, every gone, extras, right? There's, there's that one as well. Uh, but I do understand the ground thing, because you can't see what's in the ground. So, stuff that goes in the ground. There has to be an option for um, for extra. It costs in that regard, because you hit. The locators miss and you hit stuff and there's all kinds of things, so. I, I, I completely understand the in-ground stuff, it's when it gets out of the ground. Um, when, when we have these contracts. They never come in cheaper, that's for sure, so um. I don't know how we could work that where it's anything above ground is, is, and not to exceed and things that are in the ground. Have some kind of contingency, because that's really not fair to anyone to expect them to know what's there. So, I don't know if you can work, if you can work that out in, in some way, and, and. This. This water quality thing. You know. I don't really know what extra, what would you run into that would be extra on this?
On a project like this?
Yeah, what would this be?
Uh, well, well. This is basically uh, adding piping to the three new wellhouses.
So it's for the groundwork?
Yes, it'll be groundwork, but it'll be contained within forty, fifty feet of the existing structure.
Okay.
And we, and again, going back a little bit, we didn't know we needed this when we built the wellhouses, because. The initial, when we got the initial samples done. They were running a certain level of iron, when we thought, well, it's gonna go directly into water main. Most likely gonna get diluted, it shouldn't, should be able to absorb, right? And then soon we turn the well on and we start getting calls about the water tasting metallic.
Sure.
They ran another set of samples at some of these wells and all of a sudden the iron, the raw iron coming out of the well shot way up. So again, that's a process we couldn't control, so.
It's a ground thing like I.
The fix is to um. Realign the, one of the connections inside and run additional piping and um. Try to get to the point where we can build enough time for this iron to precipitate out by adding a filter system. So that's what this project was originally about, was adding um, uh, micron-type filters. But we needed to add additional piping to meet the state requirement for um, contact time. So, that's what this project is about at all three of the wells, cause they're at various levels of iron. This is like an iron-driven project, if anything.
What could go wrong in the ground on this one?
I don't expect anything to go wrong on this one, um, only because we had to excavate to put the wellhouses in. And we ran piping out the, the finished water side of it. Already, now we have to go out the backside with, cause it's still raw water, or it's still water that. Needs additional piping going out, and it's just gonna go out, make a turn and, and come back.
So it's not very risky.
It's not as much risk as like running uh, new pipelines for a tank.
Sure.
Way more length of piping, size of piping involved. So that's kinda where we're at.
Yeah, I mean, I do, I do see that. And I, I could, I could appreciate it on the other side doing the bid. So there's kinda two sides of this, but it does put us in a bad spot. Where, you know, we're trying to figure out how to save money and, and we run into cost overruns pretty much on every project. So.
But you know, in your, in your packet, I did submit um. The uh, all the contract documents that we had, the. The uh, cause the con, when you say contract, it's really made up of, I think, seven or eight different documents make up the contract. The, the agreement, we have a supplemental agreement. We have a general conditions, we had an addendum to the general conditions. Uh, we had bond documents, we had insurance documents and a memo that I submitted, which is typically everything. You would need in order to issue a notice to proceed, once the agreements are signed. So, you know, we, we've given you everything that we currently have and then had a discussion about. How to fit um. Not to exceed into a construction contract, which, you know, I'm just laying it out that. These are difficulties that, that we have to deal with when it comes to construction contracts. I mean, if your direction is to add that regardless, you know, then we'll, we'll add it, but then we'll have to go back to the contractor and. I don't know if the deal's gonna fall apart, but, I mean, we're, we're basically at your discretion. You're the bosses, so. And where we're at.
So, Tom, I've, I've looked at this contract and. In a very kinda, in a short amount of time, and trying to digest this, and my experiences with defense contracts. And I will tell you that. I have worked on and helped draft contracts for weapon systems that blow stuff up, and it's not this complicated.
Right.
Like this is, I don't even know what the job is. It, there's nothing clear here that tells me what the work is. It's all about uh, all the, you know, general conditions and so forth. So I mean, just me, I would like a lot more time. To, since we, this has all been uh, it's a hundred and thirty-five pages, I think. It's been submitted to us. I'd like to have more time to. Kinda digest it and get into it all, um, I think it's a lot to ask.
Well, the good news is we're not voting on anything.
No, you just.
I've got it, got it.
You just, you're just either. Gonna start, discuss it among yourselves and provide some direction.
Direction on.
To.
Got you.
There's two documents that need to be signed, the agreement and the uh, supplemental agreement, I believe. Uh, that are the last pieces of the puzzle, so, yeah.
Is this, it's, I guess I got a good question for Bob, is, is this, I'm sure you've seen this, is this. Boilerplate stuff, this, all these uh, these general conditions?
They are, they are. I, I have to say also as an attorney, I. I, I find the construction contract packages that are developed. Either by the engineers or the architects, you know, which package you use to be. I think overly complicated, but that, they're the industry standard.
How do we protect ourselves? Because this is, this is overwhelming. Overwhelmingly written to the benefit of the contractor.
Well, we have our own contracts and see if we get any bids. Might, might be a good time to hear from your engineer and, and his experience working with these and, and. You know, answer some of the specific questions in terms of description of project, uh. The cost that, the unit costs that are involved that could, could be escalated and. And uh, how all that works.
Is that what you want? Sure. Hi, I'm Will Coger with Forstrom. And uh, with this, the, what you're getting, getting to is, it's really about the town, town managing that change process and, and. Um, much of the work would be any, any adjustments to the price, there's a very specific provision for. Uh, for managing those adjustments in the contract. And so, and the, the contract is, all the documents that you see are uh, uh, industry standard. And it's a template that we use to start with, and, but the work itself is actually defined. In the um, in the drawings and the specifications, which are not included in your packet tonight.
Okay, yeah.
But, but it's very common to, to set up a contract like this for, for this kind of a bid and to then manage the, any adjustments. And there can be adjustments at the town's discretion also, if for example, there is a reason to add another valve. Uh, that wasn't thought of beforehand, that's, that's, that would be a change to the cost, but uh, uh, a important change.
Okay, so what is staff on from us tonight on this?
Well, I guess we'd like direction as to, to move forward with this contract. And by that, I mean, there's two documents that would need to be signed, the agreement and the supplemental agreement.
And I would be signing those when?
Uh, tonight.
Oh, they're not in my packet, so you've got them sitting over there someplace?
They should be in your packet, they were submitted.
Nothing in my, there's nothing in my, my packet.
Oh.
I have resolutions and ordinances.
Well, we'll get, we'll get you those, not tonight, tomorrow, but.
So. In a nutshell, what is the? The mechanism for, just, it would be just standard change orders for whatever. If you find something in the process beyond what has already been laid out to us for the, for this particular uh, iron removal. Uh, from the wells, um. All three wells?
Yes.
The, the. Why, I guess I'm curious, these wells are not close to each other.
No.
And none of the other wells are exhibiting the same, or they have, they already have iron mitigation.
The other wells that have iron have a, are, are sent directly to water treatment plants. Existing plants where we treat, that's almost all of our plants are iron and manganese removal. Just so happens the location of these three are not anywhere near. Existing plant, so we have to, the cheapest, um, best way to treat for those is inside the, the existing wells. And we did uh, along with John and his crew, they did a pilot study to determine. What type of filter we could add that would remove iron down to a level that was acceptable to us, which. Is what we have an administrative limit on all of our wells, it's like a point oh six limit. Which will be, you wouldn't be able to tell that by take, by drinking it.
So, if you. So if you, if you put this, if we sign this today and a month from now you come back and say, we've discovered something new.
That would be horrible. So we, we're not anticipating any other issues. We we've run enough testing and analysis to know that the, the issues with these are the, are the high iron.
It, is there any value in putting a caveat that gives left and right limits for changes or is that?
Well, there's already, there's already by in our current contract purchasing policy that says that if anything exceeds beyond five percent of the original contract price or the $25,000 limit, regardless of what it is, would have to come back to the board for approval. And we built a contingency into the original funding for that. So we're for minor stuff, they would be handled, you would never see those.
Yeah.
But anything that exceeds.
Okay.
We'd have to come back and explain what happened and why and.
Well, and under those conditions too, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to get an appreciation for the fact that we're kind of at that point. We've got the gun to our heads. There's absolutely no way for us to say, nope, we're not going to prove that because we're already down the road and we've, and we've got something that has come up that was unforeseen, that's going to cost more. And then two weeks later, it might be something else that was unforeseen. You see where I'm going with this? It's just really uncomfortable. It's uncomfortable from a budgeting perspective and you know, where do you go? Where do you stop?
Okay. Well, I mean, without the signatures, we're not proceeding with this project. And those wells are not coming online.
Correct.
And how much are we into the, into it for the three wells and the well houses so far?
I think that was, um, probably all three wells combined was I remember about two million, maybe.
Yeah, probably in that range.
A million and a half of the well houses?
Yes.
So over three, almost $4 million.
Yeah. Cause the original drilling was a couple of million to drill all three. They're all pretty close, the same depth. They're all about nine hundred and fifty feet now.
Okay.
Nine hundred and fifty? Be nine hundred and nine fifty, I believe. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me.
All right. Well, the council has to make a decision on what you want to do at this point.
How, I just wanted to ask how, how critical?
Well, we wanted to get these wells online for the summer demand, but once we started having the iron problem, that, that window is kind of gone.
There's no option for, because I know in the past, like with the, I hate to say the word radium.
Can I answer any questions related to radium?
Well, that, that dilution was, you know, part of the solution for that, that wouldn't work.
Initially, but we knew the minute that we started that dilution in 2017, we was already working on a more permanent fix.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So if we sign tonight, what's the timeline to get these things operational?
We typically would give them about a week to have a pre-construction meeting. And then notice, uh, notice to proceed would occur. And then they would give us a date they're going to start. So within a few weeks, I would imagine.
We've got the first well, I believe it's like 90 days to get online.
Yeah.
So this, and there's this, how disruptive is this to the residents around the wells?
Um, other than construction during daytime to excavate, to, to put new pipe, bigger pipe in. That's the only part they would see, the internal stuff they wouldn't see.
But, but they'll hear it if they're home.
Um, yeah, I would imagine there'll be an excavator there.
Okay. And you have to go down how far? Six feet?
Six feet. So it'll go, it'll go fairly quick. As pipe goes. It's not like we're laying a half mile of pipe or something. We're just digging out a certain section, putting a pipe in, putting an elbow, bringing it back and making sure the distances and a diameter calculated to give us, uh, contact time.
What do you want to do?
See where we got a lot of choice on this.
Right. Well, I just want to make sure we're all
I hate to spend the money when we're, when we're in a revenue crunch, but we have wells that are dead right now.
This is half a million dollars.
Yeah, we have wells that don't work.
Is it, this is also not.
Right, 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 right. No, I got it, but money's money right now.
This, this comes out of, this comes out of Tom's pocket.
All right. Well, let's get me the papers.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
We'll move on to Dan, introduction of the neighborhood commercial district. Dan, do you, do you need to spend a half a million dollars right now? Cause we're not really.
He's gonna, he's gonna sell the lot so we can
Actually, this, it was, yeah, it was good timing on my part to be after that.
He's gonna bring us money in. That's what he's gonna do.
So that, that is in part what this is about. So, um, and this is, this is just, just for discussion. What, uh, is you, is you're familiar with, uh, the town monument, um, acquired 90, 980 and 992 Gulf Camp or Gold Canyon Road. Um, and, uh, planning department right now is in the process of trying to evaluate the best use of that property. Uh, prioritizing the interest of the surrounding neighborhood. Prior to the purchase, it's my understanding that, uh, there were, uh, uh, previous development proposals that faced opposition by the residents in that area. And, uh, while the neighborhood kind of was, was kind of hoping that there would be single family homes built on that, the, the development community really hasn't shown any interest in putting residential on these properties. So, uh, in response, what we're, with the planning department and where I am recommending is we consider creating a new zoning district, uh, called the neighborhood commercial. And, uh, neighborhood commercial would be set up as a, a zoning district, uh, that specifically creates a zoning, um, uh, zoning designation serving, um, as a transition and serving as a potential use for that neighborhood. Um, and, uh, one of the reasons this is important, uh, in creating that here is that rather than just specifying what could be here under contract, we can use this district elsewhere in, in town. Um, cause there will be other instances where we have a, a commercial business that's adjacent to a, a residential neighborhood. So, um, Ray was going to be here tonight to present this, but unfortunately for him, he's with his family. He's actually, actually had got to get out of town and hang out with one of his parents. So I told him I would take this through tonight and to start the conversation. Um, he did the research on what a typical, uh, neighborhood commercial district might contain. Um, and, uh, what I'd like to do is just, uh, make, introduce this to you, see if there's any, if, if you have any, uh, things that you really don't want to be, um, see, um, on this property or other properties that might be adjacent to residential. Um, share your thoughts and then I'm going to take this back with Ray, back to the planning commission and actually develop a, uh, the code, the code amendments that we bring back to you formally, uh, for the land development code. Um, I, one of the things I did take out, out of the, what's typically, uh, proposed for a neighborhood commercial is residential. Uh, mixed, mixed use, so, so to speak, um, uh, cause you'll see neighborhood commercial adjacent to downtowns in some cases. So you'll have apartments above stores. I took that out of there, um, maybe prematurely, because I didn't think that was something that you were interested in, but please don't be afraid to throw it back into the mix if that is something you're interested in. What I did want to do is make sure that the uses that are there are quiet. Um, that, not in, um, not creating, um, conflict with the neighbors to the, um, surrounding neighborhood. Um, that, um, that we provide enough buffer zones such as landscaping along the perimeter of the property in front of it, because we, we're used to going into our residential neighborhoods and seeing front lawns. I didn't want to see this, um, I didn't want, uh, I didn't envision for you to have a, a parking lot that had a curb against the sidewalk adjacent to the road. So, um, I, what we're trying to do, um, in this designation is create something that's soft enough to be adjacent to resident, the existing residents, but something that we can actually sell. Um, or can be developed, um, in, um, developed for where other pieces of property. Uh, the reason I brought this to you tonight, instead of waiting for Ray to be back is because we are getting, we're preparing a, um, a proposal to work with a Realtor, uh, to put this property, uh, the property on Gold Canyon up for sale. So we, rather than just putting it into the, in the agreement, um, we wanted to make sure that we're basing on, basing it on something that was solid and, and covered by code. So what I've got in here is, uh, these districts are, um, typically designed to protect the neighborhood. Uh, so we try to stay away from big, big box stores. We're trying to encourage smaller scale, uh, community focused uses. Uh, typical permitted commercial uses might include professional offices, bakeries, restaurants, uh, financial institutions, uh, personal service establishments, uh, small scale rate retail. Um, and institutional uses could also include assisted living facilities, small child care centers and urgent care facilities. Those tend to be kind of catchy. Uh, you tend to just take those through a, a conditional use process so that the neighborhood has the ability to, to make sure that, uh, they don't have a, um, some, something that would actually cause a new, potentially nuisance to the, the homeowner next door. But I'd like to hear what your thoughts might be, um, and you can, and I don't think there's anything wrong with thinking about the Gold Canyon property as an example um, for this. Uh, what are you, what are you looking for, um, as far as a transitional, uh, commercial piece? Um, I know I've saw, I've spoken to a couple of you, um, that were interested in a smaller commercial. So there was a, a place for someone who has a home occupation that might want to step into a, a commercial space. It's a little bit bigger before they open up their big restaurant or something elsewhere. I know, any other thoughts?
Yes. And, and we did, we spoke a little bit, um, about this, uh, this new zoning district that I really like what's going on downtown right now in Front Street with the dual use, right? We have, we have storefronts and then you got an apartment above. And I think that would fit great in that area too, just my thought, but.
Certainly addresses affordability or attainability for housing. It's a, it's another, it's another form of housing that you could introduce to the neighborhood.
Well, if, if the rents are affordable. I mean, that, that project to me is cool as it is, doesn't seem affordable. So I don't know how we, we can't force that unless you, we did restrict it somehow. But what, what occupancy kind of thing like we discussed previously? I like the dual use too. I think, uh, we should definitely be thinking about the, the residents and maybe get their opinion on, on it, what they would like to see, the, the ones that, that came out against the previous uses.
So the, the process will be, uh, two step, it'll be creating the zoning district and then we'll, then we're rezoning the property. Uh, so that'll certainly be a public hearing and introducing that, um, and since it'll be that same evening, um, there, there might be a way to actually introduce it beforehand. So we can have those kind, have conversations. If you know the, of the residents in that area, uh, that might want to be interested in coming and speaking with me and, uh, and, and my, and the planning department in general, to see what their thoughts are. Uh, we can try to consider that as we're drafting the ordinance.
I'll maybe go to the metro district and the HOAs to get the word out.
Yeah. Maybe there's a community meeting and for the, before we go in with something formal.
We have a quick question, Dan. Um, 980 and 992, is that lot, are those two like big enough for one, like let's say bakery with parking? Like how to?
It's two acres.
It's two acres. You can definitely put a bakery on it.
There's enough for more than one building possibly in parking.
Possibly. I mean, we'd, we'd have to take a look at the parking requirements, um, and to see if it would be sufficient for, uh, customers and employees, but we could take a look at that.
And make it available to combine the lots. So it could be one center.
I like the concept. I like the fact that you're thinking outside the box. I commend you. I think this is a good thing.
I mean, I like, I like the idea. I, I don't think it's an ideal location, just pending on what goes in because of the traffic. Um, trying to get in and out of 105. Um, I see that as a big concern, but I, I, I mean, I see the, I see on the list like, you know, a small childcare center, because I, I think those are needed.
That, that helps the community out for sure.
Those are typically in
You know, or combination childcare center. And then there's like a, uh, some kind of park.
But what are the, the other acreage? Are they usable? The three acres that are attached to that, to the, to the east?
Uh, to the east, yeah. Tom, you're more familiar with that, uh, along 105, there's that stretch of, of property that we own.
Part of it, part of it's been redesigned and they've put, um, retention walls up.
Usable as far as what?
Anything is, can, can we build on it?
We're looking at selling the two acres, but there's
Dedicated.
It's dedicated. Okay. Nevermind.
Well, I don't know, Adeline.
I had always thought one of the parcels was stormwater.
Okay.
But it's dedicated. It's dedicated.
It's, it's dedicated land. So we would have to go to a vote.
Oh. Okay. So, um, but there's these two acres aren't. So, and, uh, so, um, I, I appreciate your input. And actually, I mean, I think childcare is a, a, a great neighborhood, uh, use. Um, if it's operated, uh, properly and if the neighborhood tends to use it rather than a two, I mean, to and from work, you drop your child off and it, and
Yeah, I would, I would be good with small stores, mixed use, just, you know, low impact stuff.
Okay.
You know, um, and you know, something that's going to hopefully, you know, bring, bring a fair amount of money, because this is a tough location.
I don't think another dentistry or
Wow.
Tire store.
Well, probably no tire stores.
It used to be dry cleaners and banks that drove, drove people nuts. Now it's dentist offices. So.
Dentist offices, the least impact business on, and it's quiet.
Yeah, it's super quiet. Okay. Well, I think I've got enough input unless there's any, anyone else has something. I just wanted to start here before I, I took off and, and worked with the planning commission on that. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Next up, uh, the last discussion item is something that I'm curious about since my name's attached to a letter. Uh, what is this? Who, who's redesignating?
So the Pike's Peak Enterprise Zone is, is operated by El Paso County. They administer the program. Um, Monument happens to have an enterprise zone in its area. This, um, enterprise zone was developed in 2016 and they are, um, re-designated every 10 years. So next year in 2026, it's up for re-designation. So I've included with, um, the packet, the old map and the new map. So they've just removed some census blocks areas, which are generally residential. Um, but they just need a letter of support from the town saying that we support this enterprise zone in our community.
Well, what does it take away? Because there's an area that is supposedly getting annexed. There's two lots that are commercial. Where the, um, where 105 and Jackson Creek Parkway. And it looks like they're proposing to remove all that. And there's a lot of commercial in that area. Why would we want that to be removed?
So a lot of it is based on, so it has to be an economically distressed area. So for whatever reason, it no longer meets that provision. So it's based off.
Based off, what are they basing it off of?
So census information, so jobs, um, income, those kinds of things is what they look, look at in this, in the individual census block areas.
Okay. And they've determined that, I mean, no offense to Palmer Lake, but they've removed all of Palmer Lake. That's not economically distressed?
It could have no longer met the, the commercial requirement. Um, I can ask for more information from El Paso County.
Just wondering. Okay. And so this letter makes it sound like I'm very happy about this.
Well, it was a very similar letter that we wrote when we included, um, areas of Jackson Creek Parkway. And so we're just repurposing it.
Okay. It is my pleasure to sign it then. Um, I assume I'll be told to come in and sign it.
Oh, was it? If we can print it out for you.
Okay. Okay.
If everyone's in agreement.
Anybody else have any concerns about this enterprise zone? Thing? Okay.
We seem really happy about it.
I'm so, I, it's my pleasure. I, I feel like I work at Chick-fil-A.
You have editorial changes. We're happy to make those.
No, I don't. Okay. We'll move on to, uh, public comment. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams, Mary, is their hand digital comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. Is there anybody here that would like to make a public comment? Ain't none. We'll move to, I'm just kidding.
Good evening, council and those that are still here. Um, just want to take a moment to, um, remind you all.
Um, just want to take a moment to, um, remind you all about the invite to joining us in the poverty simulation that we're putting on for the local community. It will be on July 23rd from eight to noon over in the learning center at, in the basement of Big Red. Um, we put one on years ago, actually under Madeline's tenure with us on our board as part of an outreach effort to help raise awareness for the types of poverty that exist in the community, what that looks like, what the struggles are. And then how our community helps to tackle that and make sure we come alongside members to help them live a better life and get back on the straight and narrow. And so this is an opportunity for us to educate the community. We are welcoming all. Um, letters have gone out to both council members, um, towns, both towns, Palmer Lake and Monument, as well as the school districts, the police departments and many others, a, a lot of the mental health providers in the community um, and other business owners. So this is open to all to participate. Um, it's a great opportunity to deepen your awareness for what might be happening in our community and how we as an organization then come alongside members. So, um, if you are available to attend, I highly recommend. Uh, invites also went out to our, um, county commissioners and many others. So again, it's on July 23rd. It is a sign up and reserve your spots. We can make sure we have enough spot. When you come in to participate, you will actually be given a name and a profile of a community member, a fictitious one, that you will have to play out. So you may be a, a 12-year-old girl or a 80-year-old single senior or a single dad raising, um, a family of three in a household. So um, you will be given, um, us, a, a family member to role play in this experience. And so we need to make sure we have enough of those available. So, um, opportunities to reserve your spot. I have flyers if anybody is interested. Otherwise, I believe you all have received, uh, an electronic communication. So, thank you.
I can, I can reach your shin from here. And I have a weapon. Anybody online, Will?
There are no hands raised online, Mayor.
Okay, then we will move on, uh, from public comment. And items.
Uh, it's not really a future agenda item, but, um, like this afternoon late, I received an email from Mon- Monumental Impact. Um, seeking a letter of support from council, um, so that they could apply for an enterprise zone project. Um, Monumental Impact has actually moved to Palmer Lake. However, they still serve, um, the monument area as well. Um, they work with D38 students. Um, they've had some changes in their organization, um, since you last, um, met with them. But I can still forward you the email and you can let me know if you would like to provide a letter of support to them or if you would like to find out more about their programming.
I think I've met them at the nonprofit. Uh, the Tri, Tri Lakes Chamber nonprofit night, right?
Seems likely that they would have been there. I was not there, so.
They moved.
They did. They used to be in Grace Best.
Oh, right, 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 right. Okay. Um, yeah, can you send us, send a council email?
Yes, I will do that. But since I got it late this afternoon, I thought I'd bring it up to you. That's what it's about. So I do not have any other items.
All right. Any items from the council?
Yeah, she didn't have any.
Okay, no council comments?
Just one. Um, next meeting, I will be remote at a trip out of town planned prior. So apologize for that.
We're gonna test the system.
We canceled your trip.
Well, we'll make sure that, um, you work with Mr. Williams and make sure, um, you can participate in both the study session and the council meeting.
Mr. William, Mr. Williams. Okay. All right.
As, just as a reminder, I'll be out of town from August 3rd to August 22nd. So I'll be remote on the, uh, 4th and 18th of August.
You'll have to get up at 3:00 AM for that one.
No, I'll be in, I'll be in Oklahoma City. No, that's another. Save the date.
Okay. Um, then I would look for a motion for the executive session and, um, we will adjourn.
I'll make a motion to move into executive session pursuant to 24 dash six, that's 402 sub four sub BCRS for a conference with the town attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions regarding annexation. And move to adjournment following that executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a second and a second. And that motion passes seven to zero. We'll take, uh, five, 10 minutes. And, uh, we will adjourn afterwards. Thank you, staff, for sticking around.